Well, good evening, everyone. It's good to see this packed house tonight. And I will officially call this meeting of Mayor and Council to order this September the 10th, 2019, at 6:00 PM. If the council would indulge me before we do our invocation, I would like to say a couple of things and have those included in our invocation, and that is, in our nation's history, of course, tomorrow is the anniversary of 9/11. And I think we can all pretty much, that's one of those defining moments in our lives when we can say where we were when that moment happened. And over 3,000 people tonight went to bed, knowing and not knowing that they would not see their loved ones the next day. So let's remember our nation in our prayer. And also, closer to home, in 19... I mean, I'm sorry, in 2007, we lost a member of our community and a dear friend, Michael Hardigree, died. He was 22 years old. And so his, the anniversary of his death was today. So I think that hits home on a personal level and a national level. So as we say, our invocation, let's remember those. So our next item on the agenda is invocation given by Councilwoman Lesa McPherson. Please stand, followed by our pleasant leaders.
Lord, I thank you for this evening. I thank you for the freedom that we enjoy in our country. We have so many privileges. Thank you for those that you have instilled with special courage to run toward danger while others fled, to rush, to rescue people. So whether our first responders or, Lord, those that have laid down their lives, and those that have fought also beside them that are still among us, and I thank you for them also, Lord, that have offered themselves to serve both prior to 9/11 and after 9/11. And I don't think we can show our appreciation any better than to live lives that appreciate that freedom and help to retain that freedom in our country, Lord. So I ask that you bless those, that you bless those families that are missing those that have served, and also a special blessing on those who are still here with us but are missing their buddies, their friends that they lost in the line of fire and overseas, whether it be in Iraq, Afghanistan, Lord, you know. And so I thank you for this evening. Help us to be honorable in our dealings. Help us to think seriously about the decisions we make and to be responsible. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Okay, we have several ceremonial presentations to award our employees tonight. So I will walk to the front down here. Sam didn't give me his restroom, by the way. Need to talk to him about that.
Take some of the tricks.
Our first employee that I'd like to honor is Rhonda Gullidge. Rhonda, if you will come forward, please. And is Janet here? Okay. Well, Rhonda works for our Main Street Tourism Coordinator and does a tremendous job for us. And just in the short time she's been in that, she was in the Police Department. Prior to that, she has done a tremendous job. Thank you for all you do for the city. And on behalf of the city, congratulations. And you can come up. I think we have nothing to sign. Congratulations. Is there anything to sign in there? Okay. All right, our next presentation is Wesley Payne. Wesley works in our Police Department, has been here five years. So Chief, are you here? Come on up. Say some kind things.
Do what?
Say some kind of things about this all.
Say some kind of things. He's never been convicted of a felony. Wesley, Wesley's been a, been a lot of fun. He's got a, just a really dry sense of humor. You'll be talking to him, and he'll say something, and you'll, 10 minutes later realize, wait a minute, he just cut me down. But he's just, he keeps everybody laughing, does an awesome job for us. Was involved in a recent big case that we arrested. One of our big troublemakers that's always, you know, involved in drive-bys and stuff. And him and his shift did an outstanding job on that. So we appreciate the job he did, and congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Our next presentation is Ms. Stephanie Rooks. I met her husband tonight for the first time. It seems, she's only been with us five years. It seems like a long time, and it probably does to her too, because I know she worked really hard with our insurance and with our HR department. So thank you for everything that you do. I've said it before, the success of our insurance program is due in large part to her involvement with that, and I know it's a pain in the neck, and we appreciate that. So... And this one is yours. I don't get when she puts me in order. Officer Payne, I didn't give you yours, sir. And our last one is Ms. Michelle Morgan, also with our Police Department. And again, it seems like Michelle has been here. I've lived here since '98, and she's been here, it seems like, since I've been here. But come on back up, Chief. And Michelle does a tremendous job for us, and thank you for all you do.
So Michelle, Michelle's never been convicted...
No.
Michelle handles school resource officers. She's over that program. She handles explorers, works with them every day. Guys, I want to tell you that, there ain't many folks that give as much time as Michelle does, and we just appreciate so much what she does for our department. And just a, just a superstar, and we appreciate you.
Okay, we have some more presentations. We have recognition of Matt, is it Chavis?
Chavis, yes.
Okay. I got that right. I did good. Come on up, Matt. We send a lot of our employees to training, and Pete's going to come up with him also and say a few words of what this means for the city. But all of our operators in our wastewater plant have to be certified. And so Matt recently got his Class II license, which is an achievement. And how many Class II license holders do we have now?
If a wastewater plant's, we've got three.
Wow. So congratulations on that. And Pete, you want to say a few words?
Yeah, Matt's been with us about two years, and one thing I can say about Matt is he's very self-motivated, and that has been obvious from his initial interview to where he is now. He's constantly on the books, asking questions. He's cross-trained in the lab, which has been an asset to us as well. So when our lab technician is off, specifically the location or whatever, Matt goes into the lab. So he's been quite an asset to the city and to the wastewater plant. We're very proud of him.
Thank you, sir. And last, but certainly not least, we have a proclamation. Or am I going to read the proclamation, or are you going to read the proclamation?
Actually, I'm going to...
Okay. If you will come forward, this, we're going to, this is Constitution Week, the week of September the 17th through the 23rd. And I'm going to ask Dr. Nancy Mills to please come forward and read our proclamation.
Whereas September 17th, 2019, marks the 232nd anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorial anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which we'll commemorate at the occasion, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designation for September 17th to September 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, the mayor and the city council of Villarica does hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. And as our citizens, we're asking you to reaffirm the ideals of the failures of the Constitution that they had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through the guardian of our liberties, remembering that last rights may never be regained. It is so proclaim on this 10th day of September 2019, Jeff Mayor, the mayor, and all the councilors. Thank you. I wasn't expecting to do that.
And I would like for...
On behalf of the daughters of the Abraham Baldwin Chapter, D.R., we thank you for the proclamation. Constitution Day, actually, was started by the D.R. Actually, it stands as a testament to the tenacity of Americans throughout history to maintain their liberties, freedoms, and inalienable rights. We want to recognize the 39 brave men who on September 17th, 1787, signed the proclamation, signed the Constitution. The celebration for Constitution Week was started by the daughters of the American Revolution, which is why we are so proud to be here. In 1955, the D.R. petitioned Congress to set aside September 17th through the 23rd and lay to be dedicated to the observation of Constitution Week. The resolution was adopted by U.S. Congress, signed into public law on August 2nd, 1956, by President Eisenhower. Thank you.
Would y'all come on? We're going to ask all these folks that are very involved in our community to get a group Thank you all very much. I think Sam was trying to tell me I was gaining weight or something. It was a bad one, huh? Okay, before we adopt our agenda, I know I have at least one item that I want to add to that. It was brought to my attention that we needed to add an item on here for temporary signage for Taste of Villarica, and that is put on by our Golden City Lions Club, and we would add that under... Tom, where you want to add to?
I guess under Governor Governing Body Number Two.
And what's your comment?
That'd be item, it'd be Tab A, Item Number Three, which is Governing Body.
Three? Oh, we have one.
What?
It's two. Number two. There's two items under one. Yeah, there's two things under one, so it's not under two. It'd be number two.
Let me see yours. Yours is different than mine.
There's two items under one.
Got it. All right, I've got that cleared up.
What did you...
So are there any other changes to the agenda as printed? And as I have started doing, Mr. City Manager, is this the agenda as was legally advertised?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve as amended.
I move to approve the amended agenda.
Have a motion to second. All in favor? It is unanimous. Okay, we have reached the public comments portion of our meeting. Anyone wishing to give public comments, please do so at this time. State your name and address for the record, and please limit your remarks to three minutes.
Michael Young, 9634 Coastal Point Drive, Villarica, Mayor and Council. I'm here to speak in favor of the Parks and Recreation Fee Update. We, for a long, I'm a member of the Recreation Advisory Committee. For a long time, we've had a three-tiered system where we pay one price for city children, and one price for Carroll County children, and one price for out-of-county children. That's caused a lot of problems. So Vicki has come up with a two-tiered system that blends the pricing, and she'll explain it more, but it takes the city and the Carroll County children and puts them in one group, and the out-of-county in another group. The main benefit of this is she can get software now to automate a lot of her processes so that they can save a lot of money by not having to manually do paper purchasing and pay paper tickets and things like that. So I would, I would encourage you to go ahead and approve that. I know it's a change, but Carroll County pays for a lot of, a lot of money for the city children, so lumping those two into, together into one group really does make a lot of sense. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Cheryl Bell, 225 Raleigh Way, Mayor and Council. I stand here on behalf, on behalf of the Villarica Library. We'd like to invite you all personally to attend our Hispanic Heritage Month celebration this Saturday, September 14th, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 AM. It's a free event. There's going to be heritage contests, giveaways, music, vendors, and food.
Thank you, ma'am.
Jody Mapp, 214 Rockmart Road, here in Villarica. And if, bear with me while I set up my props. I could wait until my three minutes started, I forget I want the props set up. Appreciate it. So I, I'm here to express my disbelief and displeasure at the rollback. I got really angry and really upset, and, Lord, mercy. I was going to bring don'ts caps, but every time I told that to someone, they laughed. This is not a laughing matter, y'all. This is, this is very, very serious. Our city manager has been talking, and he's not the first city manager who got this, about our infrastructure. And the rate increases alone will not fix it. We're fixing to borrow, what, $10 million? And that's not going to fix it. I ran into Councilman Longhand on Saturday and told him I was really displeased with it, and he shrugged his shoulders at me. I felt very disrespected. He said, our citizens needed a break. A break from what? This is what, in my area, what the pipes look like, the water pipes. I can't show you what the sewer pipes look like. I can't show you all the maintenance that the lift stations need, okay? Now, Councilman Carter lives in the newer subdivision, so this isn't an issue for him. Plus, he has the most expensive home, so he benefits the most.
Jody, I don't think the people that are listening online can hear you unless you go to that microphone. Thank you.
So I reacted angrily to that when he said it to me. Ms. Marchman, I want to thank you for your courage in doing the right thing on that. And he told me, in my subdivision alone, there are, and I don't, sorry, I don't remember the number of homes you said, X the number amount of homes that the assessed value has gone from 20,000 to 200,000. I said, Matt, that's because houses were built on them. Houses require more services. Those cost money. Those cost money. Our city manager has been saying a lot, if I've heard him say it once, I've heard him say it 100 times. The rate increases alone are benefits or problems. We've got to have growth. And with that rollback, that growth was negated. Totally negated. I don't understand it. I don't understand it. I've been, you know, as I thought about this, I thought about my anger over it, my disbelief. You know, I thought, well, Jody, have you been praying for these people? And I haven't. So I've put up here something I'm praying for them now. And it's a thank you for you, Ms. Marchman. Thank you for hearing. Thank you for seeing what's been told. I mean, I don't know what our staff, more our staff can do. They have done a phenomenal job explaining, fixing, doing what they can. And thank you for the courage, for standing alone and making that hard decision. I truly appreciate it. My prayer for the rest of you is that may you have ears to hear what's being said to you. May you have eyes to see. Maybe you guys should start taking them out on some runs. Pete, maybe tell the guys to come, go get a council member and take them out on a night run or something. And may you all have the courage, please, have the courage to make the hard decisions. You're getting ready to borrow $10 million. That's not going to fix stuff. We've got people that want to come here that we can accommodate. Growth that we need. Services that we need. Things to improve our quality of life. And we don't have the infrastructure to handle it. And you're taking money away from our staff, and they can't fix it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Can you remove your props? Anybody else? Would like to recognize that we have several candidates in the room tonight, and I thank you for coming to the council meeting, and you are certainly welcome to get up at any time now and speak. And I won't call you out by name because some of you don't want to be recognized, but thank you for coming to the meetings, and you're always welcome to come up and public comments and speak. With that said, seeing no one else... Oh, I'm sorry.
I feel like I live here. I just wanted to let the public know about the Public Safety Dedication Friday at 10:00 there at the, where the military memorial is.
The Roundabout.
They've put a, we've built a public safety memorial, and it's going to honor everyone from law enforcement, fire, ambulance, that have lost their lives in, during, you know, on duty. So if you could come out, that would be awesome. They're going to have an event, and they're going to dedicate the monument and everything. So thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, and both of our folks that we lost will be on there, so we would love for you to come for that. I'm hoping some of the family from both of them will be there, too. So Pleas Holt was killed in 1908, and Robbie Bishop was killed in 1999. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, council updates. I have a couple that I would like to bring up. First of all, I recognize District 2 Commissioner Clint Chance. Thank you for always being here and being a supporter of Villarica as always. I want to always recognize you. And also, just to let the citizens know, I met with our new Carroll County Commission Chairman. Chairman Marty Smith started a little routine of meeting with all the mayors and city managers from all the cities in Carroll County when he was here, and Michelle Morgan picked that up, and will do a fine job of passing that information along. But we talked about two things specifically, and that is the next Splot for referendum when it was able to be on the ballot, and also about the animal control ordinance. So what I will do is give this to our city manager and let him take a look at it, and then we will disseminate that information through our council members and through myself on my page. So just wanted to mention those two things. Anybody else?
I, okay.
Okay. Well, Chief took care of that one. The Holt Bishop Center here, and I apologize that I will not be able to make it, but the Public Safety Memorial, that's a big deal, was down there when they did the groundbreaking. So if you can attend that at 10:00 AM on Friday in Carrollton, it will be part of where the Veterans Memorial Park is. I'd also like to thank the city manager for the report. He gave us an email of a number of things that have been accomplished over the last couple of years, and until you see them all together, it's pretty overwhelming to go, wow, you know, we have gotten some things done, because sometimes it seems to be so slow, right? The drudgery of the movement of government, but, but when you really look at the list put together, maybe $2 millions a month and all that, has really played in and helped that. And so I appreciate that, and I hope to share that with my ward, because a lot of times people don't know what's going on, especially when it's underground, there's things you don't necessarily see. I have two concerns I'd like to mention at this time, too, and that is this. Back in the middle of June, I was sent some information anonymously, which made claims that a contractor that the city was doing business with had not supplied what they had bid on and required. And I was sent pictures and documentation. It is not my position to handle that sort of thing. Neither am I qualified to look at and know. And I supplied that information to the city at that time. That was in June. This is September. I would like an answer, one way or another. The other thing I'd like to mention is something that's been on our radar radar for a number of years is Butterballs. And the blight that we own is a city, and we have the opportunity to do something with it, and I think that's going to happen, but here's my concern. The mayor, with the consensus of the governing body, asked for this to be at least fixed up. Whether it's going to, I would like for it to be a welcome center, like the Renaissance Plan said. Ultimately, that's what I'd like to see, but at the very least, we asked that it at least be made presentable. It is a pinnacle point downtown. We did that at that time. We also voted to allow money to be spent with Falcon Design to come up with a plan for the property, see, you know, how much that would cost, what we needed to do there. That was in the spring. In June, we interacted with those engineers while at the convention, and were told that they still just had a few numbers to put together. This is September. I have not seen a plan. I believe we need to see a plan. And lastly, as a reminder for everyone running for office, political signs are not allowed on the city right of way. Please check with the city on this and verify where signs are allowed and where they aren't. It is private property. You must have permission of the property owner. And maybe that's something we can incorporate when people come down and, we did, okay, all right. Because code enforcement will pick them up, and signs aren't cheap. Political signs are not cheap. You do not want to lose them, and they end up in the Avante Building. So hopefully, we'll, we will enforce our ordinance, but I just want to make sure that the candidates are aware of it, so that there's, there won't be any confusion, your signs won't be taken, and you'll be aware of it. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add on the sign issue, because that was my comment. Right, they are not allowed on the public right of way, though I believe our ordinance may allow them from 2:00 PM on Friday to 8:00 AM on Monday. To my knowledge, staff has provided everyone a copy of a flyer that summarizes the relevant portions of the temporary sign ordinance, which includes the candidate signs. And basically, for me, I find it very disrespectful for somebody to be running as a candidate to represent this city, but then turn around and violate the ordinances as they are written. And then as Councilwoman McPherson said, signs are only allowed on private property with the express permission of the owner of the property. Just because you put the sign there and no one said anything, that does not constitute express permission. So I would like to see all the candidates for council and for the mayor, mayoral race, to respect our ordinances and respect, particularly, respect the ordinances of the city you seek to represent. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. We will move on to Tab A, which is Governing Body. Item number one is approval of minutes. Council, you have the minutes of the special call meeting of August 19th, 2019, as well as the meeting minutes of August 27th, 2019. I would entertain a motion to either amend or approve, either.
Any changes?
No changes. I will make a motion to approve the...
I will make a motion to approve the minutes for August 19th, 2019, and the minutes for August 27th, 2019. Second.
Have a motion second. All in favor? Is unanimous. And item number two, which was added, is a, to add the approval of Taste of Villarica signs for our event. And who is going to handle that? Dr. Mims.
The annual Taste of Villarica Lions Weekend will take place at the Mill Amphitheater on Saturday, October 5th. And as you know, the Taste of Villarica draws both local and out-of-town residents to enjoy music, entertainment, vendors, and local restaurant tastings in an effort to promote family fun and raise money for our local Lions Club. In keeping with the tradition, the Lions Club has placed approximately six banners within the city in main theme fairs each year to promote their community event. We are asking that these banners on both private property, voter ownership permission, and current locations where the city advertises sponsored events. These locations include, but are not limited to, Bank of the Ozarks, Highway 61 and 78, three-way stop at Highway 61 and 101, V on Highway 78 near Centrust, and Mirror Lake near Family Dollar. Our organization is asking to present these signs two weeks in advance, beginning September 20th, and to be approved promptly after the event is over. Thank you for your consideration and support of this city and for our Lions support, supporting our Lions Club. We look forward to extending the monies generated from this event on worthy causes here in Villarica.
Thank you, ma'am. Do I hear a motion? Do we know what the motion is? Do you have anything written? We can discuss it if we get a motion in a second.
I'm sorry. I was trying to verify, since I am a member of the Lions Club. Check, I was checking with council.
Yes, I have a same issue. I'm a member of the Lions Club, too. So I don't know if I eligible to vote on this.
We could end up without a quorum, so.
David, what's the motion?
It's a pretty minor thing.
You have a quorum at the meeting, and it's just a majority vote out of the quorum. So even if you have two abstentions, it would still pass unless there's a one-to-one tie.
Okay, what's?
The mayor would have to vote.
Is everybody up here on?
And your legal opinion is?
I believe that we accept the recommendation of the application from the Lions Club to do the signs as they wish.
Since we don't have anything in writing, what was the motion? I mean, what did they?
You want me to read that again?
Yes, please.
What we are asking for is permission to put approximately six banners up advertising the Taste of Villarica.
Okay.
They have been up there before. When the four that I mentioned, we've had them, but we could probably include a couple of others. As we said, these are included, but not limited to those four.
All right. Gotcha. I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Are three all opposed?
Okay. I'll stand, I guess.
It's either four to nothing or two to nothing.
Okay. That was fun. All right. Tab B, item one.
Good evening, mayor and city council members, members of the public. I actually came with my little scripts tonight because this is quite a big project that we have in front of us, Abimore. Tonight, the Abimore application, we are applying for, or the applicant's applying for a rezoning and a final concept plan approval from rural development to planned unit development for three parcels totaling 220 acres located at 55 and 63 Goldworth Road at Highway 61. The rezoning will facilitate the permitting and construction of 222 single-family homes, 303 multifamily homes, 44,400 square feet of retail, 12,450 square feet of dedicated restaurant space, 88,700 square feet of office space, a life-plan community, several civic buildings, and a recreational component, including a section of the Gold Nugget Trail. The Planning Commission voted last week to approve the application at a ratio of three in favor of approval, one abstention, and no member in favor of denial. In December of 2018, the Planning Commission and City Council approved the preliminary concept plan consisting of 161 single-family homes and 348 multifamily homes. Along with a different layout of retail and parking throughout the development, the applicant is proposing to increase the single-family component by 61 units and decrease the multifamily component by 45 units, approximately 45 units. Of the 303 multifamily units, 233 units are condos slash apartments, eight lived-work townhouses, and 62 townhouses. Section 2.03(c)(4(c) of the Unified Development Code indicates that the final development plan shall be reviewed for substantial conformance with the concept plan, as well as the review criteria for rezoning major, for rezoning and major subdivision. Substantial conformance means that the applicant does not increase the proposed gross residential density or the intensity of the use, increase the proposed ratio of residential units to non-residential square footage, involves a reduction of the area set aside for common open space or the substantial relocation of such an area, substantially increase the floor area proposed for non-residential uses, or substantially increase the total ground area covered by buildings, or involve a substantial change in the height of the buildings. So in the zoning book that was submitted, and many of you have it right in front of you there, the applicant asserted on page seven of the master plan booklet that they have the ability to make a change up to 20% of the, to the master plan without requesting further relief from the city council. It's the staff's opinion that the aforementioned, aforementioned ordinance should still take some sort of a precedent. But that's an option that is before the council tonight, too. The 20% figure hasn't been quantified to anything as of yet, a total project area, number of buildings, or a number of units or anything that we could find. The applicant will have to return to the Planning Commission and the City Council at a later date to approve the final plot plan after this. The changes in the conditions approved in 2018 include the removal of the age restriction of the community in order to remove limits on the market demand of the finished project. So previously, the council and the Planning Commission approved 55 and up only for the project, but the staff is removing that as a recommendation. Increases to the maximum number of single-family and multifamily units that can be submitted in the final plot plan application is also a new condition. Now it's 325 for the, for the multifamily. And the single-family, I believe, is at 250. Removal of the requirement for an interparcel roadway connection to Charleston Place in favor of a stub for a future connection. Removal of the uses listed in the approval documents in favor of the uses listed in the proposed zoning ordinance that's going to be coming before you. So we didn't want to actually limit this project to only a certain number of uses or a certain category of uses. We wanted to have it, having a more, a larger selection to actually be able to choose from. Removal of the requirement to submit a nomination for the Williams Mitchell Farm and Camp Lucretia as the local, state, and national historic properties. Williams Mitchell Farm is already on the state and national historic, register of historic places. And we find a historic marker acceptable for the Camp Lucretia, as nothing is left on that site to designate. It could never make it to a national register because there's nothing there. And the addition of a requirement to follow all zoning tabulations and design-based representations as presented in the master plan, that is fully transferable and applicable to future developers. So that protects us in case the project or the economy goes south, that these, the same zoning book would carry on to another developer and all the tabulations that are inside of it, all the numbers. The proposed concept plan conforms with the suburban village and commercial corridor designations on the future land use map. Primary future land uses in suburban village include single-family, multifamily, senior-assisted living facilities, conservation subdivisions, clustered neighborhood, commercial, small-scale mixed-use, and areas of civic benefit. The commercial corridor future development character area encourages a mix of uses so as to avoid strip commercial development. The proposed development demonstrates adherence to some of the core objectives of these character areas. Certain proposed uses on the subject property are compatible to the uses in the surrounding area as they are consistent to single-family detached homes, open space, undeveloped lots, and retail. However, the multifamily and the life-plan community are not compatible with surrounding land uses as there, of course, aren't any multifamilies in that vicinity. There are no mixed-use developments as well in the immediate vicinity. Most of the parcels have a singular use or are undeveloped. In 2018, the City Council reviewed the Three Rivers Regional Commission's Developments of Regional Impact Report, their feasibility study, market analysis, traffic impact study, and wetland study summaries. Those documents are still current. No further studies have been submitted. That's the one that goes along with this plan. The plan development process has two components. So one is the concept plan phase, which we're at right now. And the other is the final development plan. So the application, the concept plan will have to be approved by the Planning Commission and then the City Council, which it has been by the Planning Commission already. Plan development, concept plan constitutes a major step in the review process and provides general information about the land uses, development patterns, intensities, street patterns, and the proposed development. The second step is the final development plan phase. The final plan is approved in conjunction with the rezoning, proposed development phasing, and final subdivision plat. The final development plan, together with the development schedule and final plat, shall act as the blueprint for the development of a plan development project over the length of time the project is being developed. The final development plan and final plat refine the information that is submitted during the concept plan phase. This is a step, a separate application process that has to be approved by the City Council. The final development plan will be reviewed for substantial conformance with the concept plan, as well as the review criteria for rezoning and major subdivision as indicated previously. So we have the applicant here tonight. If there's any questions for me or if there's any questions for the applicant.
Any questions for staff?
I've got one. On the six conditions that you've requested to be submitted here, you say they have to be approved within six months of the plan development concept plan. Is that right?
That's correct.
Any other questions for staff? If not, if the applicant will come forward, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Jay Davis. I own the property at 55 Goldworth Road, 63 Goldworth Road, and 220 acres surrounding it on Highway 61 here in Villarica. I bought it a number of years ago, hoping that I'd get the chance to stand in front of you today and do exactly what we're doing. First thing I need to do is tell Tom Barber and his staff thank you. I could not be here without you. Bobby Elliott, thank you. Ronald, thank you. I know you're a latecomer from New Jersey, but we're, well, you know, we're happy to have you. Also, I appreciate all y'all's support. You gave me the opportunity to reach out and talk to you and try to tell you what I think I can bring to Villarica and the opportunity I think it presents for us and all our folk. I've been before you a number of times now. Thank you, Tom. Enough times to know that I forgot which are my lucky socks and which aren't. So I don't know if I got on the right ones tonight, but please vote yes. The next thing I wanted to say, just generally speaking, is that as I sat here in front of, stood here in front of Tom Flowers last week at Planning and Zoning, and he said to me that there was nothing on this side of town outside the perimeter like this, and he didn't know if it would fly. It hurt my feelings. Because we're worth it. I'm trying for the golden clouds here. I mean, I'm pushing for it, for all of us, not just for me. And I know y'all don't get emotional appeals up here, and I'm not making one. I'm telling you, the data supports it. We have seniors who need it. We have folks in the community who want this kind of lifestyle and the opportunity to live in smaller homes, and the opportunity to live within walking distance of the services they need to maintain their lives. That's the kind of community I've designed here. And with the help of the city and its staff, we've done the best we could to bring you the best design possible for the site. And over the course of the next year, unfortunately, Ronald, the engineering might go in six weeks, six months, but I suspect it'll be longer depending on what the sewer plan ends up being. And we're paying for it all, by the way. Wherever that lady is that was worried about the money, I'm paying for it. So it's going to be all right. We're going to get the services extended and make sure that the sewer and water plan is met in a way that takes care of this community and actually helps Villarica a lot. So I'm grateful for the opportunity to be here. I think I've answered all of the different pieces of this puzzle over time. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have tonight. And again, I'm just grateful to be here. Thank you.
Questions for the applicant?
I'll talk to her, please, Dave. Little under triangle box. Questions for applicant?
Actually, I'd have more, more of a comment rather than a question, and that's this. I may not be a builder, but this is impressive.
Thank you.
I've read the best of my ability to look through it, the type of...
All thousand pages.
And some of the communities we've gone to visit that we've, you know, tried to get inspiration from emulate this sort of thing with the mixed-use and smaller houses. You know, there's people that can't afford sometimes 2,500 square feet or whatever. A place for older people that you can walk to things, the green space that's included and everything. I'm impressed. That's all I can say. I hope, I hope you can pull it off.
Thank you, ma'am. I need your help and support. I'm selling houses right outside after this is over. Just to kind of go along with those thoughts, and Jay, thank you for working with staff because you've been a player at the table, and we appreciate that, too. And I've been on record, and it has been quoted in the paper, saying I believe this is a very ambitious plan. And that's not a negative statement. That is a challenge for you and this council and a future mayor that sits in this seat. But I'll be pulling for you, praying for you. I think it's a good thing for the community. And I was thinking about this plan and looking it over and thinking, wow, how beautiful this looks. And I remember back when I moved here in 1998, they were building another subdivision that said it couldn't be done, and that was Mirror Lake. And Mirror Lake has been a good thing for this community and for the city and for this counties, two counties. And so I wish you all the luck and hope it goes just as planned or better. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions for the applicant? Yes, sir.
So I've got two primary concerns about what we're approving. Ron brought up one of them. And that is how we go forward. So David, this is sort of a procedure question for you. My, and this is, this is the accountant looking at the zoning process, right? So you're going to have to fix this. My understanding is that we have approved in the past a preliminary concept plan and given them a conditional rezoning, which is worth more than nothing, but a lot, not a whole lot more than nothing. They took eight months or so getting ready. We're now approving a final concept plan and final rezoning. But that rezoning isn't using exclusively our ordinances. It is substituting their zoning book, which will take precedence over our ordinances where it speaks. And where it doesn't speak, our ordinances still control.
I agree with that.
You buy that?
Yeah, I agree with that.
So the place in the book that Ron brought up that we disagree with is the comment about the process. Because what happens next is they're going to go spend a bazillion dollars on engineering. And when it comes back with a final plat, right? Preliminary plat. Come help me, Bobby.
Good evening, y'all. If the vote is suc-
If the vote is successful tonight, the next step is, and I don't want to speak on your behalf, Jay, but they're going to phase this massive plan. It's going to be in phases. The first step is do a preliminary plat on the first phase that they're going to be designing. That preliminary plat has to come to the Planning and Zoning Commission for approval and Mayor and Council. Their engineering design drawings for construction can occur concurrently with their preliminary plat. The preliminary plat has to be approved for Phase One within one year. They have a year to get that plat approved. And basically, each successive step is Phase Two, Phase Three, the same exact thing. When we review the preliminary plats for each phase, we will review those and compare the layout to the original zoning plan that may be approved tonight. If it varies enough, like Ron was talking about, any kind of percentage varying with the layout, if we think as staff that it's more than the 20%, we will require them to bring it back before planning commission and city council to adjust that original plan. So, basically, after the final zoning plan is approved, it's just like Mirror Lake. Mirror Lake was, is a PUD, just like this, only it's just strictly residential. Starts with a preliminary plat approval, and then you build your, get your engineering drawings approved, you're off and running. You can build your streets, your infrastructure and all that. Then the final plat comes at the end of that process, when everything's inspected and approved. You've got bonding involved, all of that happens at the, at the final plat stage. It's going to happen just like a residential development, exactly, only it's giant.
Okay, so the quest, the question that I have that Ron has raised is, does the language in the code that determines or defines significance hold over what they have claimed in the book, which is a change up to 20%, which is not in our code? Because my contention would be that any statement in the zoning book that has to do with process is invalid. And the only thing in the book that's valid is zoning, is setbacks, height maximums, minimum square footage, and, you know, those kind of details, but not the procedure for going from preliminary to final conceptual to preliminary Phase One plat to, you know, that all that is still controlled by our ordinance. So, I just want to make sure that's clear because I don't want these guys to go spend a million bucks on engineering and change the plan thinking that they can do a 20% increase when it looks to me like the language in our code is zero increase. Anything over zero is significant. Okay? So, that's my question.
Yeah, and to the extent that I understand it, you know, we do have the right to create planned unit developments that have conditions that are separate and apart from the traditional developments in the code. And so, I do think you have the right to vary the standards, and if you make those ahead of time, being fully informed, that I think, I think that those are, can be made. I think it's also important that, you know, zoning is not the end of everything. There are a lot of development standards that have to be met with the city, that I think is what Bobby was explaining, is that zoning is not the end of the process. It's just really the first step. And then there's, I mean, there are many, many development standards that have to be met, and I think they have proposed how they intend to meet those.
But I want to make sure that all of us leave here knowing how much latitude they have to deviate from the final concept plan. Because it looks to me like they can deviate down, but they can't deviate up. So, volumes can't go up and density can't go up.
That's okay with us.
Okay?
The intent of that language is specifically to address engineering challenges. If we come, if I go out there and dig 200 holes and find rock and 100 of them, and I need to move something, that's a change that we envision. I got to move this, this building over here. I got to move this other building over there. I got to move this road. Those are material changes from the plan that we've submitted. We don't, I wouldn't have as much density as I have now if I wasn't trying to support a bigger tad to support more infrastructure.
All right, so Ron, in your understanding, do, do the requirements of significant, the definition of significance deal with location at all? Like, do we care where the buildings are?
Or is it density?
Or is it just density and square footage and quantities?
The only location-specific part of this review criteria is only with open space. So, I'll read it out to you. It says involve a reduction of the area set aside for a common open space or the substantial relocation of such area.
Okay. So, you good with that? I just want to make sure y'all go spend your money well because you can't go do it but once.
Yes, sir.
So, just for the record, significant change means density, size of lots, size of the house, but not necessarily that you can't move from the plan that you submit. Is that what I'm hearing? Okay. That's our intent, and I think that's the understanding of staff.
Okay. All right, the other one is this, the six-month, one-year thing, Ron. So, it, so it sounded to me like you read in there someplace something in a condition that gave them six months, which I don't think is what they're asking for. And I'm not sure they're asking for 12 months, but...
Yes.
So, is there language in what you read that limited them or required them to come back in six months with all the conditions met? Or did I just make that up?
Actually, yes, there is. We put that as a requirement to be submitted and approved within six months as a part of the condition, so.
Can we do that at one? This is just me talking. That feels like one year to me.
It'll probably be seven or eight months, but...
Yeah, not six months.
...this process, a year.
All right, so I'm recommending to council that we modify that condition to one year, then. Which, which one is it, Matt?
Just right at the top.
Isn't that what's listed?
Okay.
Under staff recommendation on the cover sheet.
It's in the staff recommendation on the cover sheet.
Yeah, in the first sentence.
Ron, can you live with that?
That's fine.
Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I do have one more thing to say if that's okay. Thank you, guys. Other things? So, the goal here is to move all of these balls towards the goal line at once, right? So, we've got the water and sewer one that we have to move along. We've got the overall engineering plan that we have to move along. We've got architectural work to move along, and then I've got this whole neighborhood full of seniors I'm trying to, like, build the actual building for. That's about a 15th month process for that, but getting the engineering done, seven or eight months, and I think we'll get there together. Thank you for pointing all that out. Last thing I want to say is this, all of the people who are lending me the money to do this, all of them, require that this be a zoning, like, we're done zoning. I may have to come back and meet these conditions, and I'm completely cool with that. But I got to have the, it has to say PD or PUD or whatever it is on the letter I get from the city in order to move the next steps. So, thank you for your consideration, and I look forward to working with you all.
All right, this is a rezoning, so anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning, please do so at this time. Seeing now, we will close the public comments portion of the rezoning, and it will revert back to the council.
Make a motion to approve the final plan development concept plan, application from Winchester Real Estate Investment LLC for property located at 55 Goldworth Road and 63 Goldworth Road. I further move to approve the final rezoning from RD to planned unit development. And I need to change that last part with, oh, with six conditions as listed above, but I need to alter something, don't I?
The time limit, yeah.
With the six-month requirement being changed to one year.
Second.
Motion to second, under discussion. I mentioned this, and Jay has been receptive of this, and thank you, Jay, for that, but since we have members in our audience tonight that live in Charleston Place, or the new name, which I never can remember, but we are still looking to, to bring that out where that the folks in Charleston Place will have a way to turn left on Highway 61 rather than have to go all the way down to Bay Springs Road and do a U-turn there. So, that was mentioned at the last meeting, and let's make sure y'all hear that, so. And I'll be sitting out there one of these days and remind y'all that we all talked about it.
And we'll be rooting for you all the way.
Thank you. We're going to have a party. Okay, any other comments? Okay, all in favor? And it is unanimous. Thank you, sir. Thank you all.
Bring it home.
Tom, thank you. City Council, thank you.
Our next one is transportation plan. And Bobby, before you say anything, I just want to say this because I know it's, I hope it's going to get approved, but I look back at my campaign video back in 2016, and one of the things that I said was that, that I didn't think we needed to move any further in this city without a transportation plan to identify the problems we have now and make sure we didn't get any worse. So, it is a delight to see this transportation master plan recommendation. So, please proceed.
Good evening again, Mayor, members of council. Mayor, I apologize. It took me quite a little while to get an RFP together to suit me and hopefully suit the city of Villarica, but I think it took me almost 90 days working not continuously, but anyway. We did a request for proposal on transportation master plan, and it was posted for advertisement on July the 11th of 2019, and it remained continuously posted on GMA's website for bidding options. I was a little disappointed of how many responses we got, but as everybody knows, we, everybody's busy, there's a lot of work going on. We received two bid proposals, one from Pond and Company for $103,500, and one for J.R. Wilburn and Associates for $99,914. Now, we budgeted in the general fund only $80,000 to cover this. And you're talking to some other folks, you know, I got 80, I got 95, I got estimates of 105, 110, so, you know. But anyway, based on those two responses, our city manager, Mr. Barbera, and Chris Montesinos, my deputy director, and I interviewed both firms for probably two, two and a half hours, including questions, you know, that we had for each firm. And we were pretty much unanimous on Pond and Company. And as my cover sheets shows, the main reasons why we selected them, they, they completed three of these type transportation master plans in the last three to four years up in North Fulton. I talked to those folks, they were very pleased with them. They proposed a stronger emphasis on community involvement, which I told them that is absolutely we got to have that. And they provided it without us even asking. And the third item was their resources in Atlanta are superior. They don't, they don't deal with any outside consultants. Every, every aspect of their engineering firm is covered with Pond's folks. So, based on that, staff wants to recommend selection of Pond and Company for the sum Sarah's going to talk more about the dollars needing to cover this, but we have extra revenue in our building permit, coffers that we've received at this point in the year. We can certainly cover the $26,500 shortfall that we need. Based on that, we're, you know, transportation master plan, I don't think Villarica's ever had one. And it's, it's a shortfall when you, we went through our comprehensive plan process, the update, and those two documents, those two plans work together. They have to. So, we're a little bit late on this, but hopefully we can get, we can get moving on it. But that's our recommendation.
You said we had $80,000 budget?
Yes.
So, we're only $23,500 short.
We are, yes.
And we have a place to get that, Tom?
That's what I just said. We're going to take it from building the revenues.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
Yeah, actually, my agenda cover sheet, the 26.5 is, I can't do math anymore. You know, we need 23.5 is what we need, so.
The good thing, Mr. Carter, is the mayor's offered to go raise the money if y'all don't.
Which mayor?
Yeah.
Is that this mayor or the one coming up?
That's how bad he wants it.
But Mayor, this, this, and I did not supply members of council with copies of the RFPs because we only required them to submit five. This is about a seven-month process with a ton of stakeholder meetings, meetings with the public. We're excited about prospects.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the mayor to execute a contract with Pond and Company Incorporated to complete a transportation master plan for the city of Villarica for the amount not to exceed $103,500, conditional on the availability of budgeted funds and general fund. Second.
Motion to second. In a way of discussion, I was thinking about this, and this is a joyous day. I've been talking to Bobby about this, and he has been working nonstop trying to get this out, but it kind, this whole process reminds me of the game SimCity. If you've ever played SimCity, you don't design a city without putting the infrastructure in place, right? Well, guess what? We did. And we're not unlike any other city and county in the state and even in the nation. So, the transportation system that we have is antiquated, outdated. The folks that are, that are jamming our streets up aren't necessarily residents of Villarica, but they drive through our city. They spend money in our city, so we want them to drive through our city. But we want them to drive through our city and get to their destination so that our residents can move around and shop our stores, right? So, that's not what happened. So, I realize that all of us that live here in this city know that traffic is a problem, and it's not going to get any better until we start designing it. But even worse, we just approved a plat for 200 more houses, which is about 400 more cars potentially, that are going to exit onto Highway 61, and that's just the start. Every new development that we have, every business, everybody knows that the big hole at the end of South Carol Road and 61 is being filled in for some purpose. And in the future, that's going to dump more folks into that intersection, which is already a bad intersection. So, everybody that lives in that area can attest to that fact. So, this is way, 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 way overdue, and I'm glad to see it, obviously. But more importantly, I want to see it incorporated into what we do in the future. When we have a plan in place, and the purpose of that plan is all the things that I just mentioned, but in addition to that, when a developer comes to us and wants to develop in an intersection, any intersection, we'll have, hopefully this plan will have in it specifications for that intersection. In other words, if they're building at the corner of 101 Rockmark Road and Industrial Boulevard, they will say this is what improvements need to be made in that intersection, and it's my desire that that developer annies up and pays part of that cost, if not all of it. So, that's the importance of this transportation plan. So, kudos to staff and the council for, for funding this, and, you know, it can't happen too quick.
As far as discussion, in regards to the grant we've applied for, do I recall correctly that it's October we would have an answer on if we got that grant for transportation?
If we receive the grant, we'll get some reimbursement toward this cost, yes.
And do you, can you remind us of that amount?
It's an 80/20 match. We have to match 20%.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion to second, all in favor? It is unanimous. I thought you, I couldn't see your hand behind you. Not him, he don't.
You mean Tom?
Thank you, Bobby. Tab C, Parks Recreation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item that's before you this evening, it's a request to update the recreation fees. Just to kind of point out a couple of things, it's been almost about four years since the last update was presented to the council. To give you just a little bit of background, the focus of what we're proposing today, I'd probably say the significance of it is that we're looking to move our existing fee structure down from three tiers to two tiers. To give you just some understanding of basically how that process and what methodology we used, let me see. Let's start with this one. So, one of the things that, it's two things that we look at. First, I'm sorry.
It's our second attachment.
Yes, that one. First part of what we look at is we look to see how each one of the sports is performing individually. We look at the revenues that we bring in. Also, what goes out as relates to uniforms, all the typical expenditures that come with that, uniforms, insurance. And so, that begins us to give us an understanding of how each one of those sports is performing. We total all of that up to understand, you know, how we're doing as a whole. The other thing that we look at is, we look at, we also look at what the revenues. We kind of do a survey, if you will, of a lot of the other municipalities that are around here to really do a comparison. So, one of the other sheets you'll see, you'll have an opportunity to see what is currently existing by each sport in terms of the revenues that we charge. And you can see right beside it what's proposed and how we're making a change on each one of those. So, those are specifically speaking to those fees that participants, when they're coming in to register, this is what they're paying us. Okay? So, the other part of that, that I kind of want you to take into consideration is for each participant that comes and plays in all of our sporting activities, that lives in unincorporated county, Carroll County reimburses us a fee for each one of those participants. I know one of the questions that one of you asked, we don't get that same type of reimbursement on the Douglas County side, just so that everyone is aware. So, last year as part of the service delivery strategy, well, I would say in previous years, it included all of our sports with the exception of soccer. Last year at about this time, the service delivery strategy was updated to include soccer. So, where we previously had been receiving about a hundred thousand dollars from Carroll County, that number is going up slightly going forward. So, we anticipate starting next year for that number to be roughly about a hundred and thirteen thousand based on the numbers that we just presented to the county. Just to, so you have a little bit of a background on that. So...
Before you leave this page, what is fall ball?
Baseball.
Yeah, baseball, softball, and the fall.
Okay, that's all, all of it?
Yes. So, I'm just gonna, if you quickly had an opportunity to look at it, what I'm proposing in this schedule is based on the allocation that we received from Carroll County. Right now, we're proposing to get about a hundred and thirteen thousand. That's going to, based on participation of roughly six hundred and eighty-six participants last year, that's gonna equate to about a hundred and sixty-five dollars per participant that we will receive in addition to what that person is coming in and paying when they register. And so, when you take that into consideration, we thought that it was appropriate to modify the rate of the county participants so that it equals the amount that a Villarica resident is paying. So, what you'll see in every incidence of each one of the sports, you'll see where, again, what we're currently charging them versus what's gonna be proposed to bring them down. I don't know if you just kind of wanna just generally scroll up. I want to see if you guys have any questions on that right off the top. Some of the questions, we took this to Recreation Advisory Committee just to have them look at. And with just a couple of them, what we always just have to weigh is, again, we still want to be competitive, but I wanted to make sure that we are looking at what the other surrounding municipalities were in fact charging. So, where there was definitely room after looking at the revenues and expenditures, if there, based on that individual sport, there was room to bring it down to keep us in line with the other municipalities, we did so. So, but overall, I think one of the things that, one of the main reasons why this will ultimately be beneficial for us, I mean, I think we're getting, certainly getting the offset with the allocation that's coming from the county, but also, again, this does create an opportunity that ultimately this will allow us to really be able to automate some of our systems when we look at just opportunities to incorporate software. We've looked at that over the last few years and this was really the one obstacle that was in the way of us being able to automate our department. So, that's kind of generally it in a nutshell. I'm here for any other questions that you might have.
I have a couple of questions. One, based on Mr. Young's comments, led me to believe, was the advisory committee involved in this process, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee?
Well, I presented the information to them. So, they didn't do the analysis, if you would, of how much we're bringing in, but I just generally explained to them, this is what we're bringing in, this is how much in, we're looking to modify in certain instances, and gave them opportunity to just review and ask questions if they had any.
Okay, so they didn't have input, but they were provided the information. Okay. I'm not totally clear on how the Douglas County situation works out. Are they considered then out of county because Carroll County reimburses us for all the outside the city, they live in Carroll County, but they're outside the city, they reimburse us for any of those individuals that play in our, or participate in our program?
Correct.
But you're doing a two-tier, where is Douglas County?
City resident.
Well, we're talking, if they live in the city of Villarica...
If they're in the city, they're good because they're city.
They're a city resident. But if you live in Doug, outside of the city, in Douglas County, you will fall in that out-of-county tier.
Got it. And probably the simplest question of all is, how come cheerleading is so much money? It's more than participating in a sport if without uniform. Am I missing something there?
The uniform is expensive. So, there are different rates if you already have the uniform versus...
Because it's very different if they have the uniform.
Correct.
Okay, all righty.
Vicki, I just want to say I appreciate you involving me in the process. Since I spent fourteen years in the department, Vicki and Tom met with me and ran this by me. I like the fact that we're giving city residents a break. If you live in the city, then you should get a break. You pay taxes here, you should, you should pay a smaller amount. And in most cases, that is. I like your rationale. In talking to Tom about it today, even Tom said, you know, some of the sports like basketball is just busting at the seams and we need another gym. And so, you know, that kind of takes that into account, too. When we have out-of-county folks that are taxing our, you know, resources here in the county, when I say out-of-county, I'm talking about out, like Douglas County proper, not City of Villarica, Balden County, Harrelson County, so forth, so on. So, I like that rationale. So, kudos to you and the staff and Tom for putting this together. I appreciate that. And I appreciate the fact that it went to the Recreation Advisory Commission because I had that same question and was prepared to say something if it was not, if it didn't go before that Recreation Advisory Commission. So, and another thing that I said, and just keep, just hold this true, Chief, you back there, this is my, it's all about the kids thing that you had to hear for fourteen years, but, you know, recreation is, recreation is a right. It's not a privilege. And we need to always keep that in mind. We're talking about the kids of this community and the future leaders, so we need to keep those costs low. And another thing that my mentor in my life, Jim Miller, taught me a long time ago was it's cheaper to recreate than to incarcerate. So, we need to keep that in mind.
I think the only other thing I would add is, I wouldn't mind if we allowed our Recreation Committee to actually give, they're called advisory. I wouldn't mind if they actually gave some input. I know ultimately they don't have the authority to decide, but rather than them just being informed, I'd actually like them to feel like their, their opinions matter and that they're valued on that committee, so.
Thanks. She's got a good schedule for you here. I move to adopt the revised Recreation Fee Schedule that begins October the first, 2019.
Have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Not all in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you, Vicki. Tab D, Public Works.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item I have for you tonight is a request to engage a contractor to provide labor only to install approximately fifteen hundred feet of eight-inch ductile iron pipe water line, extending the water line from Dairy Queen to the Dollar Tree that's on the north side of Highway 78. Currently, we don't have a large transmission line that's on that, that side of Highway 78. And the benefit of doing this would be to provide adequate capacity and flow in that area. It also allow us to remedy some replacement of some water lines and some water meter sets that need to be in the right of way. And also for any commercial development that is potential, commercial area there, that it would provide that, that service there. And then lastly, it would also be another opportunity for us to loop our system towards a continuous run of eight-inch line all the way down to 78 and 61. And we received three quotes. And the highest one was from CNL Contractors Incorporated for $188,310. The second one came in from Robinson Utility Construction Incorporated for $95,452.28. And lastly, the low bid is Dean Grading and Pipeline at $55,560. And again, this is for labor only. Staff is recommending that we engage Dean Grading and Pipeline for labor only to install approximately fifteen hundred lineal feet of ductile iron water line along the north side of Highway 78 from Dairy Queen to Dollar Tree in an amount not to exceed $55,560. And this is not a budgeted item.
And I assume we're doing labor only because we're gonna buy the materials so that the tax, you save the tax money on that.
That's correct, yes, sir.
Massive difference in the quotes.
I think it's a sign of the times. Some of these contractors are swinging for the fences, trying to get everything that they can. And I think in this case, fairly unrealistic.
I like the one. It was to the penny. That's really strange dealing with this kind of money. If approved tonight, how long is it gonna take to get this done?
This entire project to completion would be four to six months.
Four to six months.
Maybe closer to six months.
I'd like to make a motion to engage Dean Grading and Pipeline for labor only to install approximately fifteen hundred meter foot of ductile iron water line along the north side of Highway 78 from Dairy Queen to Dollar Tree in an amount not to exceed $55,560.
Second.
Have a motion to second. Any other discussion? Not all in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you, Pete. Tab E, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Always like following Pete because I'm a whole lot cheaper than Pete. So, all my stuff's a lot cheaper than him, so I kind of like following him. Thank you for putting me there.
What was your name and address now?
My, okay. So, this is software where we're working with Carroll County and I-1, and they're getting a new CAD system, which is the whole dispatch system and everything. And this is our cost that we have to incur to get that software to where their computers will talk to our computers. It's kind of cool because now when they dispatch a call, they have to call us on the radio and give us all the details. But with this new CAD system, they will be able to send it through the computer and the call will come directly to the officers and come up on their screen, which will give them all the information on the call, but will also give them all the information on the history of the houses, like if we're going to 101 Main Street or whatever, it'll tell you any history there, like if there's somebody there that's been violent with police before, if there's somebody that's autistic, if it's somebody that special needs. So, it's pretty cool. It's a, it's a really good system. We're working with Synergistics to do that, to get this installed and it's gonna bring us online. So, basically, this is our, our cost for putting this on. So, we're asking that we use the money from our technology fee to pay for this. And that way, it doesn't have to come out of budget because it was not a budgeted item. This came on pretty quick with the county to get it started. We're asking for $16,110.
I mean, it's not, I mean, when you really look at it, it's not optional because we can't communicate with them if we're not part of this system. So, that kind of makes that one easy. And it's paid with the technology fee.
Yes, ma'am.
And it's cheaper than what Pete has.
Much cheaper than Pete.
Would that be in the form of a motion, Councilmember?
Yes, I'm getting myself right back there.
I've, I make a motion to approve the purchase of the Interloped Mobile CAD System from Synergistic Software Incorporated for $16,110 using the city's technology fee.
Second.
Motion to second. All in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you, Chief. Tab F, Sarah?
F for Finance. Good evening.
F for Fun.
F for Fun, Finance Department.
Oh, my Lord, look at the book.
So, first is housekeeping. Need to update our bank signers. We need to remove Gil McDougall and add Matthew Mott to hand. We never added him. So, we need to add him to our bank signers and then we'll, we'll make the changes in January after the election.
Okay, let me understand the way. I make a motion that we remove Gil McDougall and add Matthew Mott to the bank signature cards effective immediately.
Have a motion to second. Any discussion? All in favor?
This is a no-brainer.
All opposed? All abstaining. One abstention.
Thank you.
Please, you don't want to do it?
Next are 2019 budget amendments. And I apologize, the one that Chief just, just presented, I don't have on this list, so I'll bring that at the next meeting. But we do have a few here. The first item is the increased medical claims for arrestees. So, at the end of 2018, I had to bring you an amendment for 2018 because I believe the total in 2018 was 34,000. So, that happened after we'd already prepared the 2019 budget. So, the 2019 budget is only $10,000 for this item. And as, over the last few years, we've seen a steady increase in this. So, the 2019 budget needs to be amended. So, we're asking for $25,000 here and that would be offset with our increase in sales tax. The next group you'll see there, items 65 through 76, those are all for our grounds maintenance department. And this is a new, well, this was a new separate budget this year in 2019. Previously, it had been a maintenance group in the Recreation Department, but we separated that this year. And with it being a new department, kind of some unexpected budget, we didn't, we had never seen their budget separate from Recreation. So, I'm asking for some increases in different line items. First one being overtime. So, this group of employees works all the events. They do the setup and the tear down and the cleanup. So, the overtime that I had in there was not sufficient. Next... Next, group insurance, I need to add $4,400 to that. Now, we do budget insurance based on personnel, but if you have, people have changed, or if we budget a new person, and then the person that's actually hired needs a higher level of insurance, that might cause a difference. Next, 457 match, we need $1,000 additional in that for this year. Workers' comp, we need another $1,000. Again, this is all in this one department. Maintenance and repair of vehicles, so they have quite a few trucks and mowers and trailers and things, so we need to add $5,000 in that for, for that. And as well, same situation, we have a lot more vehicles and equipment than budgeted, so I need to add $15,000 there for gasoline and diesel. All of these are being offset by sales tax. My description on the right says building permit, but it's sales tax in that case. Moving on to the next set is for building inspection department. I brought this to you in the past, but we, this department, we are, they're working more hours than what was originally budgeted, which is great. We have building permit revenue coming in as a result of their hard work, so we need to increase salaries and then the corresponding taxes, ICA taxes. That total of that is $32.50, and we would offset that with permit revenue. Next is the item that Bobby presented. It's the traffic study. It is $26,500 here. Increasing that line item, and we'd offset that with building permit revenue, as he said. And the last one on this page is for an install of a propane tank at Pine Mountain Gold Museum. That $13,000 is the propane tank itself, but also the concrete pad to put it on and all the other installation costs that go with it. So we're needing to increase that line item and offsetting that with building permit revenue.
Everything is offset with building permit revenue. Just how much extra revenue do we have here?
Um, I can't tell you that number off the top of my head. It's only the last three sections. I would say my, the, the big section for Mark's crew, for the grounds crew, I wrote the wrong description, but if you look at the account number, it's, we're actually offsetting that with sales tax.
She's got it. That's what it says here? Oh, let's see here. Okay. Okay. I was looking here.
Any other questions?
I got a question.
There is a page two.
Paul?
Bobby, how close are we to Peggy and Terry working 80 hours a week together?
Uh, Peggy's working about some weeks four, some weeks 32.
So we talk about the fact that we're building houses and permit revenue and all that, but that's the other side of it, is those two folks are almost working full-time now, both, just to do inspections.
Question regarding the overtime. Do we try to, to keep costs down? Do we do anything where we can give comp time instead of working people so many hours overtime? No, because...
Especially during, yeah, unfortunately, the events are during grass cutting season, so they're busy all week, and then they have the events on the weekends, so.
Okay. All right, so that answers that question. You answered the other questions, 'cause I was gonna ask, it said new department, I was gonna ask which department and what the main thing was with the overtime, so it's all grass cutting, all over the place. Okay. And the only other thing I'd mention as far as a comment, you know, when we rolled, rolled back the tax on property owners, that money is not used for water and sewer, but it's nice to see some of the ways we've been able to cover this. These sort of amendments are the various ways that we bring in additional revenue, building permits and that sort of thing. So that's a good sign, that growth has really helped us.
Would you go to page two, Lisa? There are a few more. If you would've scrolled up on that one sheet.
The propane, propane tank.
On the, the second item, budget amendments, there was a second page, we just needed to scroll up.
Oh, there's a second page, okay, sorry.
All right. The next item is in a, so that first group was all general fund. This next item is general fund capital projects, so because governmental accounting is special, general fund capital has to be kept separate from general fund. So that $13,000 you saw for the propane tank and the concrete pad was actually the transfer to this separate fund, so this is actually the expense here. So this is, this, it's $13,000 for the same project, but for accounting, I have to show it in four different places. And then lastly, is the water sewer fund. This is the item that Pete just presented, the water line between Dairy Queen to Dollar Tree, $56,000. We have, our sewer tap revenue has come in higher than what's budgeted, so that's how we're offsetting that.
It's good to see that we have extra revenue to cover these extra things.
I make a motion to adopt the ordinance to approve an amendment to the budget for the fiscal year 2019 for the city pursuant to Section 2-71 of the city charter.
Second.
Have a motion to second. Any discussion? Not all in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you. Sarah? And now for the fun part.
Mm-hmm.
Keep the train moving.
So tonight, we're gonna discuss the 2020 budget, and then after that, we will have a public hearing, so. All right, let's get started. So for the last two budget years, we have discussed financial health by 2020. That's been our tagline, that's what we've been working towards, and we're happy to say that we have made the enterprise funds self-sustaining, which is water, sewer, sanitation, our for-profit funds, they are self-sustaining now. We have generated positive cash balance, we are covering operating costs without subsidy, and we prepared ourselves for the increase in bond payment in February of 2020. So, yes, we did that. We, we've done those things. And now, we're asking to keep the train moving, so we're gonna stick with the train theme here. Because now that we have done that, now we have other things to address. Water and sewer infrastructure, street improvements, trail system, park improvements, and new municipal complex, renovation of downtown and Miral Lake Connector. This year's budget, or for 2020, is $33 million. The majority of that is for general fund, about, just over 14 million of that is general fund. The next biggest piece of the pie is water and sewer fund, coming in at 9.3 million, and then the last quarter of the pie, you can see are all of our smaller funds. Personnel, this year, our personnel budget is projected to be $11.1 million. Last year, it was $10.5 million. About three-quarters of the pie there is general fund, that's where the majority of our employees are. And then next is water and sewer with 18% of that. This budget does include seven new positions, seven upgraded positions. So these are the personnel requests we've been talking about over the last few months. So the additions, those seven additions include a part-time assistant city clerk, a part-time IT technician, two full-time athletic assistants for the rec department, a full-time public works administrative assistant, a full-time training sergeant. That one does have an asterisk next to it, 'cause in the past, we've, we've delayed some positions, we've tried that. This year, we only delayed one position, this was a training sergeant, we delayed it by one month. And then lastly, a distribution and collection technician, a full-time position there. So that total is $300,000 for those additions. And then on the right, we have upgrades to certain positions that are already current positions. So the first one is to upgrade an athletic leader in the rec department, upgrading a rec program leader, upgrading a custodian to full-time. This was an upgrade from a grounds technician to a crew leader, upgrade one code enforcement officer from part-time to full-time, upgrading a permitting clerk to full-time, and upgrading an HR clerk to full-time as well. So those are our personnel requests that are included in the budget. Next, these are the personnel requests that were not fulfilled in this budget, $460,000, and these were all general fund positions that could not be included. So last year, the council approved the salary study, and a consulting firm was brought in, and they looked at all of our, all of our positions, all the job descriptions, they looked at a bunch of cities that are our size and in our kind of competing area, and looked at where we stood compared to that. So market pay was the goal with that. The study was not, was based on market for those positions. It was not merit-based, and it wasn't based on the incumbents' credentials, so they weren't looking at the individuals in those positions. But the, the point of that was to fix the current structure before we move on to merit-based increases, and the point of that was, we wanna get and keep the right people on the bus. Tom has mentioned the bus in the past. As far as implementation, last year, we did a partial implementation of that, $320,000, and this year, we're asking for the second part of that, which would be $168,000. And after we've done the first two years, we'll still have $87,000 to fix some positions, to fix the structure for those positions, the pay structure. And just to note, the longer it takes to fully implement that, the more outdated that study becomes. So again, in 2019, we did $320,000, and that affected all but eight employees. We capped it at $3,000 for full-time. Phase two is going to cost $168,000. It'll affect 78 employees, and again, capped at $3,000 for full-time employees. Additionally, in this budget, we have requested a cost of living adjustment, 1.5% for all employees, not getting at least 1.5% with the, the phase two that I just mentioned. The cost of that is $65,000, and just to point on this, it helps keep the pay structure current. So the longer we go without increases, that's where we fall into where we need, we need to fix the structure again. Just a reminder, in 2018, we had no raises. In 2019, we did the phase one of the salary study, so this budget includes the phase two of the salary study and the cost of living adjustment. Self-funded insurance, this budget includes 2 million, 2.08 million in expense for that. Of that, 563,000 is administrative fees, that's the cost of the third party and some of the additional insurances we have on ourselves. That's one piece of it, and then the other part is 1.52 million in estimated claims. So the underwriters come back with what the maximum claims we could pay, which at the bottom you see is 1.69 million, and we're only funding 90% of that. So because we've had savings over the last two years, we're only gonna budget 90% of Capital requests. In this budget, we have $5.6 million in capital requests, and if y'all have your budget books with you, if you need to know any specifics, that's on page 25 of your book. Half of that, almost half of that, $5.6 million is water and sewer, funded by either water and sewer or Jifa hopefully, and a good portion of that, $1.2 million is engineering for the upcoming projects for water and sewer. And then if you look on the left side of the pie, the other half, pretty much, is all splopped. So we have a little bit from the '08 splopped, and then our 2015 splopped and 2016 splopped make up for the rest of it.
Let me stop before you go any further. I just wanna get a clarification. So, so this sheet that you've got right here shows capital requests that were not fulfilled. I don't see one for what was. So are we to assume that, that what's in there under capital, if it's not on this list, was approved?
That's why I was saying, if you turn to page 25, yes, that shows everything that is, was approved.
In your book.
In your budget book.
Budget book.
Then that leads to my second question. It says not fulfilled HVAC at Vplex.
Correct.
So that's still not...
So we're not talking about HVAC at Goldust not getting approved?
I think that's still one more year out.
I think the HVAC at Goldust was in the following year for splopped.
It was in our list of things, of possible cuts.
No, that was left. The HVAC, HVAC at Goldust was left.
That was the design.
Yeah.
The design.
Well, that's...
But it was in there.
That, the design will happen in 2020, and then the money for the actual HVAC unit is in splopped for the following year.
Thank you.
Okay.
So yes, this sheet shows all the capital requests not fulfilled. Again, these are all general funds, $845,000. Any questions on that? Water and sewer rate increases, so this budget includes rate increases, a dollar base increase for water and a dollar base increase for sewer for residential customers, a 50-cent base increase for water and sewer for the discounted seniors, and then 8.3%, again, base increase for water and sewer for commercial and industrial customers. Those base increases, we're projecting to give us $160,000 in additional revenue. And then we've also included a volume increase of 5% on water, and that volume increase would give us $100,000 in extra revenue in the water and sewer fund.
Before you go on to how it's gonna affect everybody, let me, let me, for the audience that don't know this, and those few that came to our budget meetings, one of the things that the council asked for, and I asked for, was that we did everything we said we were gonna do as far as riding the ship. The enterprise funds are now balanced, and our goal was financial health by 2020, and thanks to y'all, thanks to the, the folks that are, that endured the rate increases, we did that one year early. So I said, well, we, we need to be, you know, not, we don't need to be disingenuous with our voters, and we finished that campaign. I like the train, by the way. So we, we stopped the leaky buckets now, we, we, the buckets are full, but we still have problems, and we need to move on to that next step, and that is fixing our infrastructure. And so I like the train, I like the, the idea of moving out of the station, but just so that the public knows, we're not doing anything different than what we said. We did exactly what we said, in fact. We balanced the ship, the ship is now rotted, but we need to get the ship moving, or the train, in the right direction now. So this increase will represent the next step in the process, which is actually fixing the problems that we've identified.
So how much will this affect my utility bill? So this would be an average residential customer. So you see in the green line, that tells me how many gallons are being used. So if the average customer uses 4,700 gallons in one month, that they would see a $2.91 increase from these, these proposed increases. A discounted senior, if they use 3,000 gallons, they would see a $1.56 increase per month. All right. Well, if it feels like we have been talking about this budget for a long time, it's because we have. So we started this budget process in April this year. Back in April, we had staff meetings about objectives and budget requests, and then in May, the, the staff budget requests were due, and we had two council retreats in May to discuss staff objectives that had been turned in. Next, in June, we had three budget workshops with council, and it's been a busy summer. And with those, we did departmental meetings, and y'all heard the requests from each department. Each department head spoke to you. We looked at their personnel requests, capital requests, and we looked at even their itemized operating budgets. And then July, we continued that. We had two more departmental meetings in July, and we also discussed in length all the water and sewer infrastructure issues. And then in August, just last month, we did have another budget workshop with council. We had two public hearings for millage, and the millage rate was adopted. So in September, we're having our final workshop tonight, and two public hearings this month, one tonight and one in two weeks, and we're hoping to adopt the budget at the next council meeting. And in October, we have Happy New Year. So tonight, staff, we're hoping to get direction from the council so that we can prepare the final budget. So the agenda items are due on Thursday for the next council meeting, which is when I'm hoping y'all will adopt it. So I, I would hope after tonight, then I can go back and prepare that final budget for Thursday. So first, we wanted to ask how to reduce the general fund expenditures by 200,000 because that was the effect of the rollback. Number two, didn't know if the council had any discussion on the possibility of housing construction slowdown, the effect on the budget. And number three, any other budget changes from the council? So with the first one, reducing the general fund, so the original draft budget that went out on August 15th, the revenue was 14.28 million, and the expenditures were 14... the revenue was 14.28 million dollars and the expenditures were 14.28 million dollars. The rollback, again, that reduced our revenue by 200,000. So, we need to cut 200,000 from expenditures so that we can keep a balanced budget. So, these are some staff recommendations in order to do that. First would be to reduce contingency by 74,000. Next would be to remove the comprehensive parks plan by 85,000. Next, delay the next site, that's Andy Camp's group, by three months. Or that would give us 4,000. And then, the next three were personnel. The first one, delay the training sergeant by two additional months for 12,000. Delay the assistant city clerk by three months. And that would save us 4,000. And then, lastly, delay both athletic assistants by three months for a savings of 21,000.
That's important. Any questions or comments?
This still leaves a small contingency amount, doesn't it?
13,000.
Okay. So, it will have to be very efficient.
Yes.
Probably, my first comment would have to do with personnel and the salary study. And I know you said if we, if we, you know, didn't follow along with it as we go along, we would get off track again. My concern, again, will be what has been stressed by persons on the governing body about it being tied to evaluations. And so, I would stress that again. I still think there's a problem with, everybody gets the increase no matter what, with it, without it being tied to an evaluation. I don't think that's fair to the people, you know, that maybe really work their tail off or people who are new, who aren't necessarily super competent at their job yet. The other thing I was concerned about, well, there's probably a bunch, but to narrow it down, the water and sewer rate increases. I know it, it shows what it would be for a particular user. Let me find that. I tried to figure out how this is going to impact our citizens. So, I looked even our own water bill, two of us in the house, but we had two additional people in the house with one grandchild and a daughter. And I noticed that in six months, we exceeded that limit where it goes up. Does that, does that make us a volume user? When we're over that 47,000 number?
No. That's just the average. The tiers are actually broken up differently.
Okay. Because I know, so, I called down, we tried to get some information. We exceeded that, that lower number that then you get charged more. So, we moved into the next tier three times out of six months.
Well, the first tier is just 2,000 gallons. So...
Okay.
Yeah, I think a lot of people, especially with four people in the house, are going to move past that first tier of 2,000 gallons pretty rapidly. But I'm trying to pull up the current rate structure. But like Tom said, I think the next tier doesn't, the next tier is from 2,000 to 10,000.
Okay. And I guess my point in that being is, we are also, I'm like, no, I better not use that term. With water usage in the house, everything we have is water-saving. You know, the toilets, the shower heads. I have two rain barrels. We set a timer on the grants. I mean, go in there and like a half hour later, like, you're still in the shower. I mean, so, it's stuff we watch. So, I'm thinking about people that have three and four kids. They probably count as those volume users. And so, I'm just trying to figure out how this hits our regular people after two rate increases. And I'm looking what ours is for somebody who really watches. And now, we're back down to two people again, so we'll see. The other thing is on the commercial and industrial, they're going to get hit with 8.3 on water and 8.3 on the base on sewer. We have any idea? I mean, there's no way to even figure that out. You know what I'm saying? The residential, we can say you're average residents if you use this much. But our commercial, industrial, all over the place, right? I mean, there's no way to figure out how that's really going to impact them, is there? Big users, smaller users?
Yeah, there's a big range.
If you're a restaurant, you're going to use a lot more than, you know, an office, you know, a real estate office or something? So, that's just, I don't know, that's just some of my thoughts of trying to figure out how this is going to impact both residents and business. And the only other thing is the delay. The delay, when we delay starts on certain positions, it helps us for this year. But next year, we're going to pay for all 12 months. So, we just have to put that into the mix. So, I guess it helps us balance for this year. But that won't be an option the following year that we tell them they don't get paid for three months or something. We've got to pay them all 12 months.
And I just looked, the second tier is 2,001 gallons to 10,000 gallons. So, you would have hit the second tier in rates. But I would think most people with four people in the house are going to hit that second tier. The 4,700 example was just an example based on average usage.
I've just been running into a few people, and some of them are like senior citizens, right? Who says, "There's two of us in the house and our water sewer bill's 100 bucks." I wanted to see if that was realistic. So, I started looking at my own stuff. And, and they work. And they both work. And I thought, "Okay, let's find if that's realistic or if they've got another problem going on, if they have a leak or, hey, do you have really old toilets or water? Is there something you can do to address it?" And when I started to, it seems like so far, that doesn't seem so unrealistic that that's happening. So, I thought, "Well, okay, so what does it do if you have three or four kids?" I just, I can't help think along those terms because people don't have an option. They got to have, you got to have water. So...
I'm doing some, I pulled up my calculations I had done for commercial. So, a commercial customer that has a 1-inch meter, so this would be a smaller commercial entity. A 1-inch meter using 10,000 gallons a month, they would see an increase of $5.53 per month.
Say again?
$5.53 increase for a commercial user. This is a smaller user, 10,000 gallons, so...
So, a smaller user like a office, real estate office? I don't know.
Along the same line, I had asked for us to look at that, what that was going to impact our big-box companies like Flowers Bakery, you know, Print Pack. Because, let's face it, we're Villarica and we're able to keep our taxes low and do what we do because we have a pretty large industrial base. So, I don't see that slide in here. So, can we add that? I would like to see what you just said is maybe the bottom. But also, what I'd asked for is, how is it going to affect, you know, the bigger companies like Flowers Bakery? Last thing we want is those folks start looking around or worse yet, move because of water rates, because it may only affect us $5. But Flowers Bakery, it may affect them $5,000 a month or more. So, can you, can we get that other slide added in here?
Yes.
And a comparison to the other counties and their rates or other cities. So, we have to run it here, we compare it to those municipalities around us as to whether we think it's a good deal or a bad deal.
So, directed at Tom, are you even considering looking at the apartment base cost option at all? That we had talked about in our budget meetings and...
If we, if we approve the recommendation here, it's going to raise the base for the apartments just like a commercial. So, it's an 8% increase in the base. Bobby, help me, the, the monthly fee for a six- or eight-inch meter is like 600 bucks or something, 700? So, 8% is going to be 50 bucks or so. So, they're already going to get an increase in the base, say 50 bucks. And then, they're going to get a 5% volume increase also. So, if they're using even the $3,000 per unit in an apartment complex, then, then they're going to pass along a 5% increase in the volume on all that, which would be, let's say it's, it's not quite $5 per thousand, so 15 bucks.
But that, that wasn't your original proposal, was it? With the apartments? Was that your original proposal?
The original proposal was, we treat them all like residuals. And we charge them all a residential base, which would be going from 12 to 13 dollars this time. What they're paying now is a fixed fee of like 600, let's say 600 bucks.
640.
Is it 640? Okay. So...
See, if you're in an apartment, you have no incentive to save water because it's what I call socialized water. No matter how, like, somebody over here could conserve and somebody over here could like be taking the two-hour shower, and they all pay the same. It's just worked into the, which is too bad because we have an incentive, right? And we see it on our bill. We have an incentive to save. I don't know. I...
But even if we were to bill them differently, they would still bill the same way they're billing.
Yeah. Because they don't have individual...
They don't have individual meters.
Yeah, you'd think with technology, maybe, yeah.
You know, if we were to do what I proposed, it could be contested just on, in principle.
Say again?
Just because, if you were, if you were to approve what we recommended early, which was, you know, the individual residential billing calculation. I mean, they could contest it because there is no individual bill. So, the argument would be that we're not having to go out and read that many meters or calculate that many bills. And I would remind you of what the councilman said about that. But y'all remember that and I'm not going to say it out loud anyway, so... But it was true.
I can't, I can only speak for myself. I'm going to have a hard time voting yes on a volume increase on our citizens. And I still would like to see a proposal where we have a separate line for capital improvement because we are, we have done what we said we were going to do here in the beginning. And now, we've said, "Oops, but that's not going to put us where we need to borrow the money we need to do these really big changes that we need for water and sewer and that sort of thing." I would like to see it as a line item. I'd like to see a sunset. We've asked for information. We don't have it yet.
I agree with Councilmember McPherson on the line item and sunset.
I couldn't hear what you said.
I'm sorry. I agree with Councilmember McPherson on the line item and the sunset for the infrastructure fees.
And that would be for the amount where it's like a dollar per base and 50 cents for seniors?
Yes, we are waiting on some additional information on that.
David, you want to speak to that issue because that has been a topic of discussion, is binding future councils and elected officials to sunset laws and as far as rate increases and how sunset laws would, whatever they're called.
Sunset provisions.
Yeah, there you go.
You cannot, you cannot bind a future council. But there are some exceptions. And I'm getting y'all a memo on that that should be out later this week. There are, I mean, the general law is that you can't bind a future council. But there are a bunch of exceptions to that general rule. One of them does deal with utilities. One of the biggest exceptions deals with utilities. And it does give you some increased period that you can bind future councils with regard to utility rates. And I just have to define it because it's fairly complicated. In some instances, it's two years, others 10 years. And that is for the purpose of giving you an ability to plan for the future on. Our contract with Douglas County on water is a good example of that, that, you know, you need to have a longer-term contract in order to, for the staff to plan for utility rates because they're having to plan to pay off bonds, things like that. So, there is going to be some leeway on setting utility rates that do go past the line of a future council.
And if that wasn't clear, too, I'm sorry, sometimes you'd assume this because we've talked about this for so many hours. Sunset basically means it's on there for a period of time. Hey, we're going to do this for three years, five years, 10 years, and then it comes off. So, that people see the light at the end of the tunnel. Would be the example of some of the highways with tolls, 400, where you were supposed to, you know, it was going to pay for a certain amount of years. We would take tolls and then that would stop. And so, that's what the sunset provision does.
I would say, on the sunset provision where you're telling a future council that they have to reduce rates, I don't believe that's going to work. If that future council a year from now says, "We don't like that rule. We're changing it," I think that future council could do so.
But that future council could also change our rates, couldn't they?
They could.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
You don't have the complete control of the future.
They could raise rates, they could reduce rates. They could raise taxes, they could roll back taxes.
Right.
Yeah, we could estimate what's on this next budget and then a year after that, take it off.
We've talked about this, as Councilmember McPherson said. We've talked about this for months and months. And I would just say that, taking one project that we have right now in progress, and that's boring under the railroad. We've changed, we've moved, what, three times now, trying to bore under the railroad? So, there's no way that you can know what the final cost of a water sewer improvement is now. Because things are going to come up and they're going to cost more money. That's just the reality. The economy's going, you know, right now, contractors are pretty much having their way with everybody because it's a good market for them. So, they're pretty much, that's why you saw a bid of 100 and something thousand dollars, as Pete said. So, the only thing I would say, and I'm not disagreeing with you at all, don't take it that way. But, but I am saying that it's hard to say that we're going to budget $20 million and expect that it's going to come in at 20 million or less. That's probably not going to happen because best case, that's best-case scenario. And we don't ever deal in a best-case scenario, especially since we're sitting on a slab of granite. So, you know, projects are going to take more money. Just about every water extension that I've been a part of since I've been here has always cost more money. We're born through solid rock, we're blasting rock, you know, it's just... So, just keep in mind that, you know, if you put that sunset provision in there and that money is limited to X amount of dollars after that many years and you're not finished with that project or that plan, what are you going to do? What are you going to come up with that money? Just, just a thought.
Well, I personally think that the sunset, actually the council itself, if they won't do, if the next budget cycle comes up and they're collecting enough money, they could actually make changes to reduce the rates down. So, I don't know that we have to put something into the budget that says it's going to automatically do that where the council has that option.
I think the reason you do it is because most of the time, government charges more for something. You don't ever get it back.
I agree.
In fact, several times, we've watched them actually say that, and they haven't. Governor Deal tried it with 400. Happened with the Florida Turnpike. It was all paid for and they're, they're still taking tolls. It's just unfortunate. And to your point, yes, things cost more. I think 10 million, 10 million, I mean, there were some estimates Tom gave us where we thought this and now, it's going to be millions more that we need to fix the problems we have. And it may take us longer. At the same side, you have to look at the other side of the residents who says, "And how much can I handle at one time?" I don't have three kids in the house anymore all the time. I'm not doing Ted Lowes laundry, you know? It's... And everything we're doing costs 20% more according to our city manager because everybody's so busy. They've all got work. And materials are costing more, metals costing more and everything else.
Sarah, did you ask us to approve the budget timeline? Did you, I thought I heard that during your presentation.
No. I was just, I gave a couple of points on what I was hoping we could cover tonight. The budget timeline was saying, again, I was hoping to have direction from the council tonight so we could have a final budget. again, I was hoping to have direction from the council tonight so we could have a final budget this week. Because the agenda for the next meeting is due Thursday. So if I could have a final budget together for y'all by Thursday, then you would have time to look at it again before we vote on the 24th.
I heard some questions that rose tonight about the, um, time the raises in to the performance evaluations.
Right. And, um, you know, as, as we said earlier, that, the salary study was not done on merit. The salary study was to fix our pay structure compared to the market. So if we want our pay to be, um, market competitive, if we wanna be able to get and retain the people, the right people for the bus, then we need to go ahead and do the salary study. So, um, you know, they came at us with a number that was six or $700, six or $700,000 to fix it all at once. Um, so we couldn't absorb that all last year, so we asked to phase it in. So last year we did half of it. This year we're asking for the next phase, which would affect 78 employees. Um, but again, the longer we take to implement that, the further we're getting from the, the data that was current last year. So we're asking for the salary study to be implemented so we can fix the pay structure. Again, that was not merit based. It wasn't based on the individuals in the position, good or bad. Um, but I'd like to say we, we have good people working for the city, so, um, we need to, um, good employees that, um, we need to go ahead and fix the pay structure currently. The cost of living adjustment, which is separate, that's the COLA. That costs us $65,000, which in our grand scheme of the budget isn't a ton of money. Um, 1 and 1/2% for each employee, that doesn't get 1 and 1/2% in the pay structure, I mean, in the salary study. Um, if we don't address those people, again, only 78 people are being affected by the pace, the pay study phase two. So all the other employees that wouldn't get a raise this year, they're getting further and further from where their pay could, should be in order to stay market competitive, so.
At the same time, for the last two years that I can remember, this council has asked for some kind of merit system so that we reward the employees that are actually working the hard and, and don't reward the ones that are kinda taking it easy and riding the backs of the good ones. So there's gotta be some kind of system there to reward the good players.
We do, we do have all employees that are being evaluated. Every employee has been evaluated.
We're using that base of reasons on.
Again, no, the salary study was to fix the structure of the pay. It was not merit based. It is to fix the pay so that if someone leaves, the next person who comes in is going to make a market pay. So that when we hire somebody for these open positions, we can get the competitive people that we want. We can hire people at a lower rate, but we're not gonna get who we want. So the salary strate, study was to fix the pay structure so that we will be competitive.
Is it reasonable then, because this, we have been, the council has said repeatedly that we want every employee from the city manager down or up, um, to be evaluated on an annual basis. So I hear what you're saying. I, I understand that.
But you're not a no.
We need to get up to a, to a rate that makes us competitive with every other position in the area, which is what we've done. This is the second of three years, right? So is it reasonable then to say, I just heard that you, I just heard you say that every employee in the city has been evaluated, including department heads? Is that, is that what I heard you say?
Right. The department heads went through a 360 evaluation, so we were evaluated by.
Lot of evaluations.
Huh?
Do, do you have a copy of this? Evaluation?
If I understand that correctly, that evaluation is where you get evaluated and it comes back to you individually. Is that appropriate? It's not you getting evaluated by your supervisor, right?
For the record, let me define what I think an evaluation process is. An evaluation process is where the employee sits down with their immediate supervisor and they discuss that employee's weaknesses and strengths and what they need to do to improve. Whether it's attend classes, do, you know, less time out if it's an attendance problem. That's an evaluation. It's not where you self-evaluate yourself and nobody else gets a copy of it. Because here's what happens when that, and I, and this, this is coming from 40 years of experience. When there's no record, when there's no trail in an employee's, uh, file and you get ready and say, well, this boy hadn't worked for five years, what are you gonna use for justification? I mean, there's nothing in their file that says that they've done or haven't done what they were supposed to do. So I think that's, for the record, an evaluation is just that. It's not a self-invaluation. It's something that the supervisor spends X amount of time sitting down with their employee and says, these are things that you need to do to improve. These are things that you do great. Thank you for doing all these things. That's an evaluation. So is it reasonable? I understand what you're saying and agree completely that this does not need to be tied to the three-year plan that we started last year and this will be the second year of that. But is it, is it reasonable to say then that after that third year is implemented, that we can start tying the raises then to an evaluation?
If we have the money.
Well, yeah, if we have the money, obviously.
We don't though.
Well, you, how much are you budgeting this year for the third year, for the second year? Of the three-year study?
168.
160, which is about three new people. And we had, how many that did, were requested that we didn't hire? Eight, 10?
How much are you, how much are you requesting for the third year of implementation?
There will be 87,000 left.
There should be enough, you know, we should never balance the budget on the backs of employees, but at the same time, we have employees that, that do, to Councilmember McPherson's point, we have people that, that, that overachieve. And they should certainly get a bigger share, share of that. But the people that just come in and put in two hours in an eight-hour day shouldn't get the same raise as that person. There should be some incentive, and I know y'all know that, I'm not saying that you don't know that. But the future council, I hope they look at that and can separate a budget item from an evaluation item. Because that's what we're talk, we're talking about authorizing, I think, the council is authorizing the city manager to conduct employee evaluations on every employee that works in this city. Is that, is that a correct statement?
Yeah, I don't see how in the future you can decide who gets 2%, 3%, 4% unless you've evaluated everyone and have some method, methodology behind how to set those raises.
All employees have been evaluated by their immediate supervisor. They're graded.
But it's for the market right now.
No, no, that's separate from the salary survey. So we, we've done evaluations. I see them all. I, I, Stephanie sees them all. She signs off on them. I sign off on them. Department head signs off on them. Supervisor signs off on them. And if I remember, there's been one person in the last year, maybe two, that got a below average evaluation. And the others that we know that are problems, we've worked to help go work somewhere else. And y'all know some of those departure. So at this point, the, the places where we still have problem children are more attitude than performance. Because everybody's working. Now, we've got some people that run their mouth that I wish didn't. You know, we've got people that have bad attitudes that I wish didn't. But even with that, folks are working. I mean, that's the, that is the climate and the culture that we're creating. And if you looked at that email I sent you and that list of stuff that the councilwoman mentioned early in the meeting, I mean, all that got done by everybody else, right? Primarily, the department heads didn't do all that stuff. Right? It was the staff that did all that because folks are working. So at this point, if we were to have a merit-based pay raise, one, I don't know where the money would come from, but two, there's not a big, a big span of performance between the, the average person and the high performer. There aren't but just a handful of high performers in the whole place. Because every, just about everybody is working. And even, even when y'all interact with me, y'all are not coming in and saying, man, I wish we'd do something about so-and-so because most of those people are gone. Or they're, they've gone and they've tried to come back. I mean, I can tell you who some of those folks are, that people that left and I'm glad they're gone and they've tried to come back. You know, we haven't let them, so.
Just to be clear, we're not talking about the budget, the 2020 budget on a merit-based system because it's too late to implement that. We're talking about the one after that.
Or the one after that, because next year we're gonna come back with phase three of the salary study.
Okay, after phase three then.
And another COLA, probably.
By the way, there were 10 unfulfilled, um,
Yeah, so you figure,
Personnel.
How much money is that? Half a million?
Yeah. 459,000. Well, almost, almost 460.
So I mean, we've gotta grow a lot just to get to the point where we can handle that.
Yeah, and just to be clear on the employees too, it doesn't necessarily mean somebody is a pro, problem child. Sometimes you're just new. You're not proficient yet at your job. Somebody still has to lead you along, hold your hand, help you. And that study specifically said that those numbers, those, the study I read, those numbers said that the, this is based on people that basically have achieved, they're on their own, independent in their job and that sort of thing. So they expected, they just expected that was a given. I don't know that. Only you know that. So all our, did all our department heads get, um, evaluated this year? And I don't mean the three, the 360.
Just the 360 we did together.
And that's the one you do?
I evaluated them, they evaluated themselves. Most of y'all evaluated them. And then the department heads evaluated each other. So all of, say it again?
Subordinates evaluated as well.
Right. And then there, and then if you had a enough people in the department, the person that reported to you that also evaluated.
But you don't,
So there was a lot of review.
But you don't get those, right?
No, I didn't get them. We just did them together.
You and the department heads? Are you, obviously you need to get together with the whole.
These two can speak to that. Did you feel like you got an evaluation from everybody?
Yes.
Was it, was it helpful?
Yeah.
Well, Stephanie?
Yes, very helpful.
When we can go around and talk, Pete got one. I mean, y'all, y'all were honest. I mean, you, and I felt like we were honest with each other. Do you feel like people were honest with you? You, they were, I felt like they, y'all were honest with me. I felt like, so.
So that's good.
I thought we got good feedback.
But to what you said, and then I'm gonna totally get off this topic, um, because you need direction. In order to have direction, you've gotta have some sort of consensus feeling, not just what I think or one other person. You've gotta have some idea of direction. To what you said though, there needs to be a file with this in it that says things, this is good, this is good, this isn't good, right? That a supervisor would have with their employee below them. So you would have all your department heads and you'd have, you'd write and meet with them. That will happen next year?
I don't know that it will because I don't work with the department heads that way. Like, take, take Pete for example. If I have a problem with something that Pete's done recently, that was the old West Plant project. I sat down with him, we talked about it. I communicated that I didn't like what we were doing and the way we were doing it, and he went out and fixed it. When, when you're dealing with a department head, that's the way that gets done. I don't wait till, you know, six months later when I have an evaluation and talk to somebody because it's, it's timely. I mean, the prob, if, if, well, I'll, I'll give you one with Stephanie. Stephanie sent out something to everybody about a meeting and I didn't feel like there was enough notice. Okay? So I sent her an email and I said, hey, this, you know, we talked about this, this isn't enough notice. So I'm, I'm not worried about having some kind of a sit-down once a year thing because I'm talking to them almost every day. And we're meeting every week and it is a very honest group. As you can imagine, right? The mayor, you've been in that group. You know what that's like.
But here's what I'm gonna say, and I'm gonna, I'm not gonna beat a dead horse, but I'm gonna say this. That's a good system and it works for you. You leave that scene, the next city manager that comes in has no idea what he's dealing with. Because there's no record. There's nothing in an employee file that says whether they're an overachiever, underachiever, were there, were there weaknesses, strengths?
When, when I came in, I didn't, I didn't care what the previous guy thought.
Okay.
I mean, sorry.
But.
Well, well, I mean, that, think about the input y'all gave me. Every one of y'all had opinions about my department heads. And y'all shared them. And that's all it was, was just information. But I didn't base my view of people on what y'all thought. Right? It was just information, sort of like who's related to who and where they came from and what they do for a living. But, I mean, I, I try to start from scratch with everybody. So, so yeah, I, I, I hear what you're saying though, but for department heads, that's, that's just not how I operate with them. And they don't operate that way with me. You know, if they don't like what I'm doing, I guarantee they tell me. And they tell me in a group sometimes. How many times have you come into the room with somebody else to talk to me about something?
Multiple. So tonight, um, just to kinda bring us back, um, so, since y'all,
Good luck.
Vote to roll back. You know, first and foremost, we need to reduce the general fund expenditures by 200,000 because effectively we've already reduced the revenues by 200,000. So if the council could give me some direction on how they wanna do that, so we can make those changes.
Looks like you had it on a piece of paper.
Well, yeah, but she's asking for our input, right?
Those are staff recommendations, the ones I read off.
I'll watch your, I'll watch your plan, the other one.
Yep. I'll, I'll go with your plan.
Not yet, I don't.
10,000 that needs to come out, uh, out of the governing body. And that is the monitor and the mics. There's also, uh, within the budget, some excessive amounts of money being spent on training and/or travel. Up 400% in a couple. You probably find several thousand there. I've been more specific with the city manager on those. I prefer not to say all of those out loud because it points out particular people and I just don't think this is the place to do that.
If we wanted to change the proposal, we would just balance it using that contingency account. So if we wanna add a, a different cut like the 10 grand for the equipment, then we would just reduce the cut in contingency by 10 grand and make it 64,000. That way we don't have to worry about offsetting it against something else.
So any other items? From council members?
I didn't bring my budget book.
Maybe we could just see a couple of different options on budget night, um, that take into account some of the Councilmember McPherson's proposals and balance on option A if we do this and option B if we do that. I think that would help kinda give a good visual.
My hope is to have a final budget book.
Okay.
If there's, if there's any direction you wanna give.
We'll have to do it tomorrow.
I'm sorry?
We'll have to do it tomorrow.
Yeah. So if that's a reduction y'all wanna make, then we can adjust the contingency like Tom said.
So we need to send to you some emails showing some things that we're not happy with. I would like to see a lot of it.
I'd rather do it tonight.
I don't have the book.
You wanna see anything?
No. I didn't wanna weigh in.
With your notes, understood.
Let, let me just say something about the process too. Last year we went through this process and we all felt like that we, we were lacking information. And staff has went overboard this year to provide information. We had, we started back in April with these meetings and had them. And we had a lot of good input back and forth, uh, from the council. We had moments when we were probably a little tense with one another. Uh, but that's part of the process. And, uh, so, you know, I, I just wanna make this statement for the employees out there. Don't ever feel like this is aimed at you directly because we answer to the constituents that put us in office, but also the other folks that have a stake in this, including ourselves, because we're all taxpayers. So it's nothing personal when we, when we say these things. And if that's been, uh, what you heard or, or felt, then just know that that's not, that's not the way it is. We had to make tough decisions. This council makes tough decisions every single month. And, uh, some of them hurts bad, some of them not so bad. Some of them hurt residents, some of them hurt employees. But it's a part of the process. So for everybody that has something to do with that process that started back in April, thank you. Sarah, you, you have to listen and try to interpret in some cases and thank you for indulging.
The only other, um, The only other thing I, and I don't know how much consensus. The only other thing, I, and I don't know how much consensus there is, so, again, I can only speak for myself, and then we can figure out where we are, and maybe it'll give you more direction. And that's that I am not okay with the current proposal for water and sewer rate increases. I know we've asked for some additional information. I'm not okay with the current proposal. I don't know where that's going to leave us, because we've talked sunset and everything else, but that's where I am.
Okay, uh, well, this is a public hearing, so, David, we need to do that portion of it.
Yeah, you need to ask if anybody has any comments about the budget.
After that, then I'm gonna try to bring it back to, to some reasonable accord here and figure out what we're gonna do moving forward, because, let me just say this before we open it up for public comment. I, I would like for this budget to go into effect on time. We worked on it since April. I know that if it's not where y'all want it, then you have the right to vote, and we'll, we'll extend that. But we've had a lot of time to talk about this. So, you know, I just, that's just my input. So with that, I will open up public comment.
Mayor and council, Michael Young, 9634 Coastal Point Drive. Two quick points. The COLA is supposed to keep the pay structure viable. Given the current economy, I think I've heard reports of 6 million unfilled jobs across the United States, where they don't have people in those jobs. The jobs exist and people aren't there. There's a lot of competition for people. Do you really think 1.5% COLA is going to keep the pay structure competitive? Really? The second one is, the $200,000, you took half of that, more than half of that, at a Parks and Rec. Tom keeps saying, and you keep agreeing, we need to grow our way out of this problem, but you keep cutting back on things that prompt growth, so.
Thank you, sir.
Woo, I've never stood here before. And it's a lot harder than I thought to just sit there and be quiet. I don't know how many, how many more of these I can do. Well, I'll never understand that one. Uh, let me, I wanted to hit a couple of things, though. I want to talk about the sunset provision, because we've talked about that on this council when I was in favor of it before, but let's not forget that the Jifa loan application relies upon the revenues from the increases that we're proposing. And when you sunset them, we're not allowed to use that as part of that plan. So it's important to keep that in mind. Um, let me see what else I was gonna say. Just to Leslie's point, did you say you set a timer for 30 minutes for Jacob? That's too long.
No, 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 it was 10 minutes.
That was too long.
No, it was 10 minutes. Thank you.
And then, let's see. Matt, I like Matt's recommendation about the proposed cuts for the $200,000, which was part of that rollback. Bring back that proposal, Sarah, and then some of the other emails that you may get, put it in a separate block that looks the same, so that the council can then vote on it. That allows them to all have an input, because it's hard to understand the consensus here. And I didn't see that there was a lack of consensus on doing Phase 2 of the, the pay study, nor the COLA. So I appreciate that as well.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Okay, so you know, we will close the public hearing on the budget for 2020, and we'll revert back to the council. And I agree with, with Mr. McDougal's assessment, you know, I think the best we can do now, I like the idea of adjusting the, the contingency by the, the things that we still have problems with. And Tom, is, is it acceptable, then, for council to get you those things that they don't like in the budget, and you to provide that sep, separate list of those items, and see what that total is? Is that acceptable to the council?
So you want, um.
Send an, excuse me, send an email with, okay.
So one thing that we could do on the 5% volume is that's roughly equal to a dollar of base. So if you want to swap those, you can do that. You could do a $1 base increase in water and a $2 base increase in sewer, because that's where the capital's gonna be, and not do the volume. And it's about, it's within like nine cents of, and it takes it off of the Toronto, Flowers, Sugar, Print Pack, you know, apartment complexes, Tanner, all the big water users.
So Tom, is that acceptable if the council, along with that recommendation, if they give you their list of things, then you put them in a chart, and, and then we can, because I think your list of 200,000, you know, even if we take some out of that contingency of 74,000, I mean, we reduced it to 74, so reduce it more than that. Is that acceptable from your standpoint, counsel? Is it acceptable from your standpoint? Because I would love for this to move forward.
It takes it off of Tanner? Say that again?
All the big guys, all the big water, our biggest water users are the apartments, Tanner, the three bread companies, Print Pack, yeah, Sugar, Toronto, and Flowers, Print Pack, Tanner in the apartments, probably Willowbrook. Somebody help me, just seen that list before.
So let me make sure I understand, Tom. You're saying eliminate the volume increase and increase the, um.
The sewer base.
The base from $1 to $2?
For the sewer.
For the sewer.
I do it on.
There's no volume increase on the sewer.
No, but that's where the capital expense is.
So we take it off the water and we put increase in sewer base?
Yeah, which is, I mean, it's the same arithmetic, so it doesn't, doesn't matter.
So how's that play out?
How's that play out for the commercial? They're doing, we're doing the same thing for everybody?
They're gonna be get, instead of getting a $50 a month base increase, they'll get a $100 increase on their base, which is, you know, for those big guys, it's nothing.
Whereas the volume would grow as they use more water. So this will just be a step in.
One of the things that it doesn't do is it's not gonna foster additional conservation, because that, only the volume is gonna do that. The base is not gonna do that.
Okay, and us input and data to you, as far as the budget goes, emails to you, what kind of timeframe are we working on here?
I think we're working on it tomorrow, because Sarah needs to do the book on Thursday.
So we need to send them in tomorrow?
Tonight would be fine, too, though.
Don't, don't hold your book.
Can we come to that agreement and move this train out of the station?
Yep, I think we just did.
Okay, all right. So Tom, are you going to discuss the possibility of the housing construction slowdown? Or are you?
Well, I wanted to raise that, just because it's come up at least a time or two in our conversations, and I did, I never got any sense that there was consensus about that.
Move the mic around.
It's an issue. I mean, it's a, it's a topic of conversation in the, you know, among y'all and us, so. And, and I'll say it this way, then, let me say it a different way. There is no consideration of that in this proposed budget. We, we are planning on 300, is it, are we doing 300 again? So the arithmetic that we use in this budget is 300 new housing permits next year.
How many have we got this year so far?
We're on pace to do more than 300.
This year? So it's.
But if it stops.
Yeah.
You know, it's gonna stop.
We do in the what if? Okay, well.
Right. I don't have a crystal ball, so.
Right. I don't think we, any of us do.
No, but either does a family, either does a family or anybody else with their business, and when the money doesn't come in, they have to make cuts. I mean, that's just the way everybody lives, right? I mean, all our money doesn't come in automatically the same all the time.
So what, what we talked about before was, we can't use water and sewer tap revenue to make capital long-term payments, because when the economy slows down, that money goes to zero. On the general fund side, it's building permits. So it's hundreds of thousands of dollars, and what that can't do is pay for people, because the same principle, when the slowdown comes, it's not a slowdown, it is stop, zero. That revenue goes from 450 to zero, or 500,000 to zero. So we can't, so if we, if we budget fully, and we hire people with that money, and then, you know, in, in the winter, or whenever, housing stops, then we're gonna be short that amount of money in the budget next year. And all this good news that Sarah keeps bringing us, which is, sales tax is up, Splasht is up in Carroll, Splasht is up in Douglas. I mean, that's, that's gonna continue only as the economy, the big economy, the national economy, the state economy continues to do well. So as long as we're comfortable that the national economy and the state economy are gonna remain healthy, will be healthy. People are moving into Atlanta, people are moving out of Atlanta, people moving into the state. I mean, it's all good for us right now. That's why, you know, I, I think I've told you all that, that I've been asking Peggy and Terry, who are the inspectors, how many times they're going out into the community and doing an inspection and seeing a for sale sign on a new house, on a newly constructed house, and the answer is zero. So every house that we're building is either pre-sold or sold during construction. None of them are making it through the construction process unsold. So the, I mean, what's better than that? You know, the builders are almost not at risk right now, which unfortunately tends to make them crazy, because they're gonna think it's gonna continue forever, which is what we did 10 years ago, and forever didn't last, so. So what do you, what are you thinking? What's your gut feeling, is the question? Do we bank on another year of health in the economy or not? And if we don't, then we need to cut some more stuff or delay some more stuff.
Bobby, this, I, I have a question, and I've asked this question before, is most of these lots, these 300-plus building lots that we've issued, all infill. The lots are cheap, the builders bought them cheap, so they could sell the house, they could make more profit on it. Where are we at as far as percentage-wise are those infill lots been full, filled?
We probably got another 300 over the ones that are committed right now.
That's part of your answer, then?
Thank you, God.
Yeah, we need rain bad.
That's part of your answer.
Which is also costing us more. When we go into drought, we have to buy more, we have to buy more water. So there's so many things that are unpredictable.
Part of your answer is, your growth is gonna slow down as soon as those lots are filled?
That's very possible.
Possible. Well, we just approved something down 61?
Yeah, but that ain't gonna happen next year.
No.
Right now, you have vacant lots that have water sewer hookups. The builders come in, the developers come in, they buy them, all they have to do is build a house, and, like you said, it's sold before they do.
That's, that's next year.
That's the closest thing to a crystal ball that I can give you, is once those infill lots are gone.
So we have this conversation in a year, because we could be moving toward being full. I've only, I've only got one builder that's talking to me about building a new subdivision right now. Everybody else is building and existing. But we've got multiple existing second phases that haven't even started. Charleston Place 2, Twin Oaks 2, Bobby, help me. Charleston Place, Twin Oaks, and what else hadn't even started yet?
Somerset.
Southwoods 2. Right, Charleston Place 2. Summer Gate 2. So I mean, we've got three or four second phases that haven't even started. So I mean, there, there are a lot of lots, that's redundant, but.
Sounds like there's a lot of possibilities out there.
There's, we're, you know, there's a lot of houses to be built here still, without building a new subdivision.
Okay, any other questions from staff? I mean, from council to staff? Thank you all for being a part of this process. I'd like the official staff to hold up their time and endure these meetings. It's, it's, it's part of a process. It's a democratic process we're going through. So, okay. Moving right along?
All right, so we have one last item before executive session, and that is to discuss a request to authorize me to allow our public schools that are in the Villarica cluster to use our city facilities for free, and if so, what kind of guidelines you want to give me for that, such as all, all of our facilities, some of our facilities, how many, you know, is there a limit on how many times per year? You know, that kind of thing.
So I'm the one that asked this to be put on the agenda, and it came to my attention that Glanton Heisman Elementary School had been charged $300 for staff to open the bathrooms at, at the amphitheater. And it just occurred to me that, you know, if, if our schools are part of our community, which they certainly are, and that, that we shouldn't charge schools for that. The recreation department, I don't know if you still do, but do you still use rec, school fields or facilities for practice?
No, not right.
Your teams do.
Last year, we did, we did COLA with last year.
Okay, they don't charge us, right? Okay. It just occurred to me that if, you know, we're, we're a part of a bigger picture here, and that includes our schools and our youth. And so I don't think it's unreasonable to say that we waive certain fees. As far as direction's concerned, I think we also charged them for the police officers that had to work the little road race. Is that true or not true? I'm, I'm okay with that. Let me just get past that.
Glanton Heisman Road Race a couple of Saturdays ago?
I honestly don't know about that.
I don't think.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm not, I don't think that's unreasonable to expect them to pay for officers, staff people to actually do those things, but to pay for somebody to owe $300 to open up bathrooms is just, their budget, I think, was $1,200 for the entire event. That just seems a little excessive to me, so. But there's not a policy, it wasn't Tom's fault, it wasn't staff's fault, there's just nothing to cover it. So, you know, that, that's why I asked this to be put on the agenda.
You brought up a valid point, though. How many times a year would you, I mean, you might have somebody that's gonna use it once a month, and you have some other people that might want to use it once a year, so. Do I cover it all, or is this part of it?
I mean, it's y'all's decision. If you're asking me my opinion, then, you know, I would say that if it's a school-sponsored event, and that, that's a, that's a distinction. In other words, it can't be a splinter group that's affiliated, affiliated with the school. But if it's a school-sponsored event, that you waive the facility fee, but you charge for employees and any other cost associated with the event.
Okay, just the fee part then? Room fee?
And I think they've already paid the $300, by the way. So I would not be opposed to that being returned to them.
Is it, is it accurate to say they're not even really using the mill itself? They're just doing a five can, they need access to the restrooms?
I think that muddies the question, though. Because the question to me is all of our facilities and all the cluster schools.
That is correct.
And not really
Okay.
Focus too much about this specific.
Although that's what brought it to my attention.
Right.
So although this still involves a mill, they come over and they, don't they do some kind of rally there at some time? Rally, but they kind of provide their own supervision. I kind of feel like if it's not really costing us money, we hopefully can have a relationship with them where we can use something of their, apparently we did last year, and apparently we have in years past, I don't know, but somewhat reciprocal. I can't see charging them $300 to open up the restrooms. I will say that, that, that seems crazy.
I'm only gonna add this, because I don't see Janet here. We did have the one year that, I know this came up in discussion, where, say we've had, we had extensive rain one fall, so when we had quite a few people out on the mill, the, a lot of the grass was just, it was just really destroyed. So I think what had previously just been discussed was like doing a deposit, because it was, the grass was destroyed, and I think there was a lot of trash that was left behind, that left staff picking it up in that instance. But that's, that's the only thing that I really remember as it relates to the mill. On the Parks and Recreation side, we don't really have any challenges, because we do often, we haven't this year yet, but there, there may be a need sometimes for us to use their facilities, or if we're having some challenges, and they come over and use. facilities or if we're having some challenges and they come over and use ours. But that was really the only incident that I remember when the mill-
So if I'm hearing you right, it really does come down to just the mill?
No, that's not.
That sounds like, it sound different from what you said, okay?
No, no, I just gave a very particular example where it was, hey, because it draws in a lot of people, the question was, how we handled it before was just putting a deposit in the event something came up, something ended up being damaged because there was quite a bit of trash that was left out after, just throwing out one example.
Yeah, and we shouldn't be left with that, no.
And-
I can tell you, when I was in the recreation department, had it not been for the Carroll, for this cluster of schools, we would not have, we wouldn't even have had a recreation department program. We didn't have our own football field, we didn't have V-Plax. We used Villarica High School for our football games and our soccer games and our cheerleading. There was no cost. Now, we did provide someone to pick up the trash, the same staff people that programmed it, picked up trash after the event. And so when we built our own football field, that of course changed, but we, in our basketball program, at one time, we used three basketball gymnasiums. And I'm not sure if we're not, are we not using those at all now? But we need another gymnasium?
We're not using their gyms at all, are we?
You know, but my proposal would be, for you to consider, would be that we waive facility fees, facility rental fees, not including staff hours if somebody's required to police the area or, that's a bad term because we need police officers, too. If somebody's going to be required to-
Clean up.
-keep the place clean, to keep the trash cans full, that they pay for that. There, I don't think that's unreasonable. The part I'm asking is for the council to consider waiving the fees, the rental fees for the cluster schools in the Villarica District.
I have no problem with that.
Tom, you see anything where that could come back and cause us an issue?
If it does, I'll bring it back. But right now, I don't have the authority to do it because that fee schedule doesn't take into account any of this or only wanting to use the restrooms. I mean, you know, we didn't envision any of that.
Unless I hear an argument different, I'm okay with your proposal. That's why I was saying, if there's going to be a problem, tell me now what you see as the problems. And I agree, if it costs us, if we're having to clean up. The deposit thing, I think that might be debatable if it is left a mess. It would give incentive to-
We can still charge a deposit and refund it.
Okay, okay.
Is that a motion? Is that a motion, Lester?
I don't even know how to put that into a motion.
I wrote a motion on the-
Oh, excuse me. Listen, my tablet shut down an hour ago, probably. It's-
I made that we authorize the city manager to waive the rental fee for city facilities when used by schools in the Villarica Cluster effective October 1st, 2019. Contingent upon some of the concessions made that staff personnel may need to be compensated and so forth.
Okay. Have motion second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you all, I appreciate it. And the kids appreciate it. Okay, next on the agenda is executive session, so, David, take it away.
There is a proposal to, a motion on the floor to meet to discuss an executive session to enter into a contract to purchase, dispose of, or lease real property, subsequent, subject to approval in a subsequent public vote. One purpose, the second purpose is pursuant to the attorney-client privileges provided by the Georgia Code to allow you to meet in private with your legal counsel pertaining to pending or potential litigation.
I make a motion regarding executive session for that purpose.
Second. Have motion second. All in favor? We're in executive session. Did you vote yet? Okay.